It is now six o'clock, March 5th, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. In the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as housing assets successor. May we have real call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protam Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
We will have the invocation delivered by Assistant Pastor Joseph Garibi. Did I pronounce it right? And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Besinger, so please stand.
Father, thank you for the opportunity that you have given to me to pray here in front of the City Council of Victorville. Lord, I know that in Romans 13:1 says, "Everyone must submit to governing authorities, for all authority comes from God, and those in position of authority have been placed there by God." Therefore, because your word is truth, we thank you for placing each board member here this evening. We thank you for giving them a servant's heart to serve this city and its many residents within their jurisdiction. Lord, we ask for your guidance and your presence to fill this room, so that decisions can be made morally, justly, and unselfishly. Your Bible reads, "The steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord, and he delights in his way." So we know that those in this room, before they have to make decisions that will affect their residents, will seek you first, knowing that you will give them the right steps and decisions to make for their city. Lord, be with everyone here that is listening, watching, and actively taking part of this meeting. Be with them as they travel home after the meeting, and may their night be a restful one, knowing that you are in control of all things. Lastly, we know that Jesus said, "That whatever you ask in my name, that I will do, that the Father may be glorified in the Son. If you ask anything in my name, I will do it." So that the Father may be glorified in the Son, we ask in Jesus' name, knowing that you will meet us here to answer these prayers according to your word and your timing. In Jesus' name, amen.
So at this time, I will have our city clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by interrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with the order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We do not have any appeal hearings this evening, therefore, we move on to public hearings. And I will start with item B1. Public hearing for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Community Planning and Development, CPD, grants fiscal year 2019, 2020. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen and agency comments regarding the city's needs and strategies for the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan, and allow prospective applicants an opportunity to share their needs.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff? I'll start with Councilmember Jones.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Rodriguez. Ms. Gomez?
Yes, just, Mistress Scott Webb, for the benefit of the public, not everyone has been here quite as much as I or the council have. If you can briefly tell us this specific plan and why it was forwarded today, it doesn't have to be anything lengthy, just for the benefit of the public, I would appreciate that.
Great, yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is the first step in the process of awarding CDBG grant funding for the next fiscal year, 1920. This is the process where the council will receive feedback from the public and also applicants for funding on what their needs are. When you take that into consideration when this item comes back before you, where we approve the action plan, that includes the allocation of those funds.
So if this is federal funding, which it is, how much did it differ between last year and this year? Are we still getting $1.2 million? And how is that being divvied up?
That's correct. It's, the federal budget hasn't been approved yet, but we're estimating around the same amount of funds from the prior year. So we're looking at around $200,000 for service uses, where the remaining would be for construction-related projects.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Mister Cox?
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I do have some cards. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do have some cards, and it's a three-minute time limit. The first one that I have is Carmen Garcia, and after Carmen will be Deborah Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and other staff of the City of Victorville. My name is Carmen Garcia. I'm the CEO of the Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board. We provide fair housing and landlord-tenant services to the citizens of Victorville. We have our main office in Ontario, but we have a satellite office here in Victorville. I was just at the office. We're in a building near here that says MGR outside, and that office is open for walk-ins, for constituents to go and find out what their rights are on landlord-tenant and fair housing. I wanted to give you an idea of the types of calls that we get. Someone called because they'd been injured and they were out of work, so they couldn't pay their rent. They were behind on their rent. They had a portion of their rent, but they weren't sure if the landlord would accept it. So we offer landlord-tenant mediations. So the person who called wanted us to mediate the issue, so we called the landlord and we explained that the tenant had a portion of their rent, and they wanted to make payment arrangements to pay the rest of it. The landlord agreed to that and said, "Yes, I'll take the portion of the rent, and then I'll enter into repayment agreement, so I can get the rest of my rent." And the tenant actually finished paying all the repayment agreement. And so what happened in that situation is that where there could have been housing instability that might have led to an eviction, perhaps other things, loss of rent for the landlord, instead, there was an amicable resolution through a simple mediation in which our office acted as an intermediary, that was a neutral, to create a space so that they could actually resolve that dispute involving the rent. We also provide fair housing services, telling people about anti-discrimination laws related to housing. Our footprint here in the City of Victorville, we attend events here, such as the High Desert Americas Job Center event. We hold a workshop on fair housing every October. And we also hand out educational literature and information about fair housing and landlord-tenant. And we also are here to assist the city if the city has questions about fair housing, landlord-tenant. To give you an idea of how needed these services are, in the current fiscal year, 1819, we were expected to help 38 people in the fair housing piece.
You have 30 seconds?
We assisted 120 people. For landlord-tenant, we were expected to help 444 people, and we helped 788 people. And we will continue to help people. We're only seven months into the contract, and we've already completely exceeded what we were supposed to be doing. So I urge you to go ahead and continue to fund our agency. I feel like we're doing an excellent job for the City of Victorville, and I think it's a very needed service. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Davis? After Deborah will be Brenda Sutherland.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Deborah Davis. I'm here on behalf of Legal Aid Society of San Bernardino. I'd like to, first of all, thank you for your time and your dedication on this task, and to thank you for the support that you've given us in prior years. Since 2000, although we maintain our office in San Bernardino, we have been coming up to Victorville at least twice a month to provide legal services to the folks here in the high desert. These legal services assist people in curing problems having to do with basic needs. Our application lists all of the types of work that we do, but I will briefly tell you, it includes restraining orders, protective orders, expungements, family law, caregiver authority for those who are raising someone else's minor children, caregiver authority for those who are taking care of disabled, dependent adults. Also, we've added services that allow specialists to handle labor and employment matters and civil matters. According to the Department of Justice, 2017 report, 71% of low-income households in the United States experienced at least one civil legal problem in the past year. And those problems had to do with basic needs, including health, income, stability, protection, safety. We're here to assist the Victorville residents in resolving these problems. And we know that the service that we do is reaching out to a great number of needful people. In 2018, 9% of the entire people that we served countywide were Victorville residents. And we're serving almost 3,000 new people a year, while giving about 25,000 units of service to those who are returning ongoing on their case. We know that this benefits the individuals greatly. We know that this benefits the entire families, and therefore strengthens the City of Victorville. We stand ready to continue with this, and we look forward to the partnership. Can I answer any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Brenda Sutherland. And after Brenda will be Matthew Moses, Matthew Keglin, I think it is. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. My name is Brenda Sutherland, and I'm the High Desert Community Outreach Coordinator for CASA. CASA is an acronym that stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. I believe we take ordinary people and teach them to be extraordinary, and that's to advocate on behalf of foster youth. I'd like to thank you for your past support, but I want to explain to you what your support has allowed us to do. This past year, we had recruited more volunteers for the Victorville area than ever before. Matter of fact, this past, the past four months, we recruited and screened and sworn in 25 volunteers for CASA. And one of those members is your Fire Chief, Greg Benson. Like to thank you for his support in helping us in doing that. Why do you need a CASA? We know that our young people that are in foster care fare better with a mentor, with someone who advocates, who are advocating on their behalf. For example, the national average for foster youth that are graduating from high school, less than 50%, but with a CASA, 77% will graduate high school. And I am pleased to say that this year, all of our seniors that are in the high desert area are on target for graduating high school. And that is a huge thing. For some, they're the first generation to graduate high school. We have currently on our waitlist over 200, and in the high desert, we have over 50. What we are encouraging you to do is support us for 2019 and 2020. We want to improve the educational outcomes for youth that are in foster care in the Victorville area. We plan to host more trainings. We want to reduce the number of kids that are on our waitlist, so that they would be paired with a advocate that can help them improve not only the quality of life that they have, but to change their legacy to a positive life. Our goal is to serve a minimum of 28 youth through the appointment of a CASA. Again, we have met every goal that we stated the last three years with your support. For 2016, 2017, and 2018, and 2019, and 2018 and 2019, we've met our mark, our benchmarks, our goals. And we are thankful for your partnership, and we are looking forward to that in the future. Thank you again.
Thank you. Now, Matthew Keglin, and then after Matthew, Marie Leah Reese?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Coughlin. I'm the Executive Director of Moses House Ministries here in Victorville. And we have two applications that we've submitted to CDBG this year. The first one is an ongoing collaborative effort that we've been partnering with Rose of Sharon to provide intake and referral services to families with young children here in the high desert. Those intake services open the door for ongoing services, such as our parenting education and our case management services, which are designed to reduce risk factors for abuse and neglect, and stabilize family home environments. We've been providing those collaborative efforts with Rose of Sharon for the past seven years, and we thank you for that support. We would appreciate consideration for future efforts, as the need in the community still continues. The second application is a new collaborative effort with High Desert Homeless Services to provide employment development services through a thrift store that Moses House has been operating. The design of that program is that clients receive on-the-job training in retail, which we understand is fairly entry-level, but many of the families that we're working with have significant gaps in employment. And being able to put some relevant on-the-job experience and some training, even for entry-level, increases their opportunities for securing, gainful employment in rapid time. Collaborating with High Desert Homeless Services enables us to be a little bit more efficient in that program delivery, whereas at the physical thrift store site, they'll receive the on-the-job training. With High Desert Homeless Services, they'll be able to provide the soft skills, resume development, interview preparation, some financial planning, and different opportunities such as that. The benefit for both of our organizations is that it ties, we're closely located in proximity to one another, and we serve similar populations. So families that are residing with High Desert Homeless Services for emergency shelter are able to maximize their employability by benefiting from both services collaboratively. Similarly, for the families at Moses House Ministries with young children, they'll benefit from having some possible childcare opportunities provided while they're doing their on-the-job training and getting those extra incentives and opportunities in the interview preparation. So we appreciate your past assistance in these programs and any future consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marie Leah Reese, and after Marie Leah, Mitch Nikosia.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council members. My name is Mary Lee Reese, and I am the President of High Desert Transitional Living Connection. I, first of all, want to thank you for your support for the last several years. We really appreciate it. We're looking for support again this year. We have a food pantry, a clothes closet, and we actually work with the emancipated foster youth, the people that are coming out of incarceration, because a lot of them end up homeless. And so we try and direct them for housing, for jobs, for how to dress, et cetera, et cetera. And during that time, we provide them with food and clothing and necessities. We would like to call to your attention that we've been working with other nonprofits for the last probably five years regarding backpacks for kids when they start school in July. And this year, we're looking to do more than we have in the past, because there's like over 200 kids that are homeless. There are homeless children that still are going to school, still need backpacks, they still need school supplies. And so we're asking for a little more money this year, because we need to fund more than 1,000 backpacks this year. And I know it's not all on us, it's a collaborative effect with other nonprofits, but it will help us to put our portion in to help out. And the other thing is, there's so many families. It seems like in California, the cost of living is so high, that we are finding more and more people coming for assistance, rather than, rather than the, rather than the sum of people getting smaller, it's getting larger. And so we're meeting our goals every year, we're helping people every year, we're exceeding our goals. And so we just want to say, thank you for your help, thank you for your assistance, and we hope that you'll fund us again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Nikosia, and after Mitch, Andrelita Schabernet.
I'm usually too short for this. Hi, my name is Mitch Nikosia. I'm the Executive Director for the Victor Valley Community Services Council. We are a very old nonprofit, originally started back in 1956, so we're 63 years old this year. We currently service senior citizens and disabled adults with free programs, and what we've asked the council for this year is support for our transportation program. We provide free transportation to multiple locations for seniors and disabled adults. It is absolutely free and door-to-door. We do pick them up at home and bring them to their doctor, to banking, shopping, whether it's, they have to have blood work done, get prescriptions filled. And this facilitates the ability for some of our seniors especially, who are homebound and don't get out, but are still able to live at home and independent, just need that ability to get from place to place. We help them extend their healthcare, be able to maintain that continuity of care. I just transported a gentleman on Monday, and I was just set to transport him to the doctor and come back and pick him up and take him home, and he needed to fill a prescription, so we then needed to go get to Walgreens, and then we needed to wait and come back. So this whole about three-hour period was just dedicated to getting this person his healthcare, and facilitating the prescriptions that he needed to stay healthy and remain independent in his home. We do this for thousands, we provide thousands of trips every year, and about 65% of our clients live in Victorville. While we do service the entire high desert, most of our clients live in Victorville, and we take them from Victorville to the other cities in the high desert. We really appreciate the past funding from the council, which has helped us do home repairs for our seniors. And this year, we're asking for funding to support our transportation program and keeping it viable. We do have a donated bus from Victor Valley Transit Authority, which, excuse me, this year, we hope to get our brand-new bus through Caltrans. It's being built as we speak, hopefully, they're working on it right now. And we're going to have a brand-new, very smooth ride, because right now, we're using a bus with over 300,000 miles on it. And our seniors are wholeheartedly enjoying the ride and the conversation that they get, and the way they get to meet people on our bus, but they'd sure like that smooth ride. So as soon as we get that going, we're going to be taking even more clients and hopefully extending our hours of operation. Our second application through the City of Victorville was for a repair to our own building. We own a building in the City of Victorville downtown, near Seventh Street, and we do have a very leaky roof. And in that building, we facilitate multiple meetings, not only for our senior citizens who we go pick up and bring to that building to get them out and socialize, but we allow other nonprofits to use our meeting room and facilitate other types of meetings. We know and communicate with all the nonprofits that are here. Basically, we all work very well together in the high desert, so any one of these agencies are very worthwhile and supporting. Thank you very much, and I apologize, I have to leave, because I do take care of my elderly mother.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Andrelita, and after Andrelita, Dolores Williams.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So I work with San Bernardino Sexual Assault Services, and I've been working in the Victorville office out here with Cassandra Black for the last two years. And for anyone who's unfamiliar with our services, we are the Rape Crisis Center for San Bernardino, for the County of San Bernardino. And what we do is, we start counseling at the age of five. We also provide prevention education to community members, as well as organizations and within the schools, starting at age three. We provide advocacy services, as well as court accompaniment. We also accompany to the police stations, as well as hospitals, for anyone who has been victimized by sexual assault. And we provide support groups and workshops within the community. And just to briefly speak of some of the highlights that we've been able to accomplish with the funding that you all have been able to give us over the years, we've expanded on our support groups. We've been able, with just the two of us working in our office, to get up to three support groups in this year. One that we're going to be piloting, that's curriculum-based, and we also have one that is ongoing and has proven to be very successful within our clients, with our clients, as well as some community members, and our annual summer SAS group. So that's a big accomplishment for us this year. We've also been expanding on our Art of Healing workshops that were only offered within the federal prison for the last five years to the women camps. We're now offering that workshop to the men camps as well, which has proven to be successful, as well as within other organizations who have requested our Art of Healing workshops to be represented within their facilities. So that's another big accomplishment we've been able to make over time. As well as, there has been a high demand for safety and prevention education for reunification purposes within Children and Family Services, and we have been the requested organization to provide those services to a lot of families who are trying to reunite with their children and with their family members. And so that has been another big success for us to be a referral for Children and Family Services, and working that closely with county representatives. So we thank you for that support that we have been getting, because your funding has helped us to have all of these things in line, so that we can help our community and help our families reunite and learn about safety and prevention. And this year, of course, April, we're going to have Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and so I wanted to put that on blast. And we are going to be going out into the community within Victorville, and doing everything that we can to promote, to be against sexual violence, and to get information out there within the schools and within the communities. So we are going to have a very busy year, and we want to thank you for your continued funding, and we hope that anything that you can give us will continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dolores Williams, and after Dolores, Jimmy Wildron.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. First, I would like to start off by saying thank you. We were the first-time recipients last year of this grant, and because of you, we've been able to expand. I also want to say thank you, Mayor, for participating in our event, coming out and touring our facility to see exactly what we do. Councilwoman Blanca Gomez, you've been out to our facilities and have actually done some hands-on cleanup work with us, so thank you very much for that, and we appreciate any participation. Since 2005, Millionaire Mind Kids Comprehensive and Evidence-Based Programs have exposed underserved students here in the high desert to careers that they would not be, otherwise be exposed to. We partner with educators, businesses, and government, are pillars of support. We provide these, initially, we provided summer classes, but recently, we have expanded our services to year-round programs and after-school programs. Because of the grant that we have received, we have increased our community impact by 20%. So we want to thank you very much for that. And that increase is in the areas of, we have now rolled out a brand-new family center, where we now have parent education, as well as children's education, helping parents to navigate their students through success pathways. We believe strongly that when we empower youth and families in our community, we empower the whole communities. And we also strongly believe that parents own their student successes. So the families, students, community, we all are the pillars of support to ensure our student success. So we want to thank you for that, thank you for the expansion. So, we want to thank you for that, thank you for the expansion. This year, our funding allowed us to graduate 15 high school students, 13 of them was college-accepted, two went to the workforce, and one to the military. That is significant. And again, we serve students across the High Desert, 75% are Victorville residents. Thank you very much, and if there are some questions, I'd love to be able to answer them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jamie Waldron, and after Jamie, Inger Robertson.
Good evening, everyone. You'll have to forgive me, I'm a little under the weather today, I spent most of the time at the ER. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jimmy Waldron, I am the Executive Director for High Desert Homeless Services, and I would like to thank you for your support throughout the years. As many of you know, HDHS is the only family homeless shelter in the High Desert. Our 55-bed shelter is a 90-day program that empowers homeless men, women, and children to gain their independence. We provide everything an individual needs, including three hot meals a day, plus case management, which includes an employment specialist that helps with applications, resumes, interview skills. Each year, we try to increase our program services, so that our clients can be successful returning to our communities as productive members of society. Two years ago, we started our Shelter Family Daycare to remove the barriers that single parents had towards finding employment. Last year, we started our Ride for Success Program, where we started giving rides to and from interviews and for employment for our clients. This year, we have applied for and will be receiving heap funding to purchase a multi-passenger vehicle van, to do outreach in the community, and to also to provide monies for rapid rehousing, to pay deposits and rent for our clients, to get them into housing. All these services are provided free to our clients, and they do never have, they never have to pay back the deposits for the rapid housing funds. Along with the 55-bed shelter, we also have taken on the lead at the Victor Valley Community Warming Shelter. It's a collaborative between several organizations and community volunteers and churches. It's a warm, safe place to stay during cold winter months, between November and March. It is located at the fairgrounds. This year, we helped over 150 unduplicated Victorville residents who had nowhere else to go. And as many of you guys know, the reason that we started the warming shelter was due to the resident from out in the valley who passed away out in the desert during the cold, from hypothermia. We are currently closed this year due to unforeseen issues with some of our location. We just closed on Friday. But hopefully, with CBDG funding, we will be able to finalize making a more permanent solution to help our community's most vulnerable residents. Along with a lot of the residents that were at the warming shelter, we have five families who got into permanent housing, and we have three families who are currently waiting to be put into permanent housing. And we also were able to provide additional services for some of the guests that we had at the warming shelter, getting them into other programs, so that they can get back on their feet. Thank you for your continued service.
Thank you, thank you so much. Inger Robertson, and after Inger, Mark Graham.
Hello, council. We also want to thank you very much for all your support of A Better Way, the Victor Valley Domestic Violence. We have a 25-bed shelter. We held, had 13,000 meals over, and over 8,800 safe nights for children and families. Our values are empathy, education, and empowerment. We offer temporary restraining order clinics at the courthouse on Fridays, and anytime people need it, coming into the office. In our education center, we have peer support, victim impact, youth life, anger and parenting, anger management and parenting, and our newest offering is Couples Count, and that's for any couple that knows that they didn't have good samples, and if you don't know what different looks like, different ways to move forward in having a different life. We also, the most exciting thing recently, is we had a reunion that had over 65 people. People had been there from 10 years ago to one year ago, speak to those that are in the shelter now with encouraging words. They also wrote messages that are gonna go in the shelter to encourage anybody who comes through the year. So, you help us continue those kind of efforts in this valley. We had over 150 people alone in February that we assisted, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mark Graham, and after Mark, Nicole Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Mark Graham, and I'm the pastor of Abundant Living Family Church, High Desert, and I'm representing the New Hope Program. Our program has consisted of three different phases. Phase one, we were helping serve individuals coming out of incarceration from the High Desert Detention Center. So, we were serving and working with the Sheriff's Department behind the courthouse, and when they were released in the middle of the night, we would help them get home safely and provide a taxi cab ride for them. We had serviced 13,497 individuals coming out of jail in our first phase. Our second phase is called New Hope, and we've been able to partner with the Sheriff's Department, Public Health, and Behavioral Health, and we were able to eliminate the uncoordinated drop-offs of people that are getting out of jail, they were getting dropped off in Old Town, Victorville. So, we partnered with the sheriff, we were able to eliminate that. Some of our progress for that, in the last three months, we've transported over 1,975 individuals from the High Desert Detention Center. 347 of them were arrested for public intoxication, but the important number is 275 of them, when they got released from jail, were actually transient, and they were unsheltered, and we're serving them. We have a fleet of six vehicles that run pretty much 24 hours a day. We go to the detention center at 6:00 AM, 11:00 AM, 6:00 PM, and 11:00 PM, and we go to Barstow, we go down the hill, and we transport people in the High Desert. We've handed out 1,847 bags of food on the bus to help them, and we've driven over 29,000 miles in the last three months. That's the equivalent of driving across the United States 10.5 times. And so, we're excited about that. And then, Phase Three, we have applied for funding, so you funded everyone else, please fund me too. So, Phase Three's gonna be our Sleep Safe Center, and we want to have a center that's open in the evening for people to be able to sleep and get connected to public health and behavioral health resources, but mainly when we transfer people from the jail that need 24 to 48 hours sometime, just to lay their head down and get themselves back together for free, we want to open up a center that does that and connect them to services. And then, in the morning, we can connect them to public health, behavioral health, or they could do some community service work in the High Desert, cleaning up areas that have some blith and different things going on. So, once again, I'm begging for some money. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Williams, and after Nicole, Rosio Garcia.
I didn't know it was that easy to ask for money. Anyways, my name is Nicole Williams-Artri, and I am the founder and director of operations for Acor Solution. And we are, we founded in 2014, just a couple of moms deciding that we wanted to be a change in our community. And so, we are parents, we're residents, and we're community influencers, and we not only, we help individuals and families that are facing utility shut-offs. We decided to look at the life situations that drew them to our organization, and so, we asked the questions, like, "What brought you here? Was it a relationship separation? Was it a job loss? What opportunities could we provide that would be of support that your families won't have to suffer any longer?" And so, our service model looks like this. We assist directly and indirectly with utility assistance. We provide life coaching and mentoring through workshops and individual one-on-one counseling sessions. We also provide resource referral. Acor Solution, we're a fast-growing nonprofit. We've already been making community impact with the numbers to back it up. Our first year, we served 300 individuals, and our second year, we served 600 families. And in 2018, we assisted an astonishing number of 19 individuals and families facing utility service termination. And the number of individuals and families is pretty telling, considering that we don't receive any government assistance. We are three moms, and we individually invest in our own organization, but we need help. And so, we've decided to partner with an organization that I know you're familiar with, St. John of God Healthcare Services, has come alongside of us, and we're gonna ask for a sizable donation, so we can increase our reach. Currently, we only help with utilities like electricity and gas, but we're seeing a high number of calls for water assistance right in the Victorville area. So, what we'd like to do is extend our reach to provide water assistance for services that have been terminated or in jeopardy of being terminated. So, I just thank you all so much for your time and for you to consider us Acor Solution and our collaborative effort with St. John of God Healthcare Services.
Thank you. Rosio Garcia, and after Rosio, Thomas Salas.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rosio Garcia, and I am founder and vice president at Acor Solution. Now, just a little correction, in 2018, we helped 900 families. So, our slogan states, "Love starts at the door," and it does for everyone we serve. So, we believe in the Chinese proverb that says, "Feed him and a fish, and you'll feed him for a day; teach him how to fish, and you'll feed him for a lifetime." So, at Acor, we have a unique assistance model, that before benefits are given to any of the clients, they are required to go through a 45-minute literacy class. So, we don't just provide them with what they need, the help to pay their bill, but we give them resources and information, so that they can go through life and try to make a difference in their financial situation. So, we give them the mandatory class, leaving them with the beneficiary informed on budgeting and how to save on their electricity, gas, and water bills. We want our clients to increase the opportunity of financial success. Our genuine interest is in our clients' well-being, prompted us to offer solutions to the root cause of the financial woes they were suffering from. And 2019, we look forward to collaborating with St. John of God Healthcare Services to offer help and hope to no-too-low-income families. We look forward to meeting more people who share the same passion of helping others as we do. With many people working towards the same goal, it is not out of our realm of possibility to think someday we can help together, we can come together to end issues like homelessness. Like the saying goes, "Two heads are better than one, and there is power in numbers." And we do collaborate and refer a lot of the nonprofits that are here tonight, which are really, really wonderful. I see a lot of familiar faces, and thank you, thank you guys for your time, and thank you all for everything that you guys do.
Thank you. Thomas Salas, and after Thomas, Kelly Maxwell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and all council members. I would like to thank all of you for giving me the forum to express our gratitude on behalf of the Brothers of St. John of God, St. John of God Healthcare Services, and Samaritan Helping Hands, also for the council's continued support in the years past and the consideration of this year's award, allowing the opportunity for us to promote our core values of hospitality, respect, and healing to all who reside in our community. It is because of solution-driven bodies like yourself that we are able to make a noticeable impact in our community, of being of service and staying true to our motto of doing good to yourself by doing good to others. As a result of your support, Samaritan Helping Hands, we are able to provide an, on average, 300 people and families with enough resources to prevent a person from going unfed, unsheltered, unclothed, or losing vital, necessary utilities. And through collaboration with the Ladies of Acor, you know, we anticipate that those numbers are gonna increase even more. We anticipate a continued and increased success in the further positive outcomes in the lives of people we serve, which is only possible through your continued support and the support of our local businesses. And through the Working Recovery Program, we have been able to return people who have been stricken with the stigma of alcoholic or addict back into the workforce. And not only that, but we've actually contracted with some of the local businesses who actually believe in our vision, you know, and want to give our, you know, the people that we see a second chance. And I'm very proud to say that we've contracted with about 10 or 12 local businesses who do contact our agency, looking for, you know, people to put back to work. It's made a really big impact so far, and we hope that other local businesses can jump on board.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have 30 seconds.
The Work and Recovery Program has been so successful since it started, that we're even moving or converting the top portion of our Samaritan Helping Hands building to offices where we can do more classes, resume building, and just offer all kinds of services to put people back to work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Maxwell, and then after Kelly, Lisa Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm with the Rent a Veterans Project, we help veterans start over. And actually, I started this kind of work in 1991, mostly down the hill, and I was sitting here thinking about what I was gonna tell you. I just realized, there's a delivery nurse, Kirsten Busto, she retired a few years ago, but I'll bet she delivered half the babies in this room. Her husband was a Vietnam-era vet, he was one of my close friends I grew up with, and he was, he was in trouble. He was homeless up here, they're from Victorville here. He had nowhere to go, and I thought, "That can't be, I've been doing this a long time down the hill, nothing up here." And I looked around, and there was nothing here. Well, I took him down the hill, and we tried to get him in some places, I mean, other than Barstow. And I'm thinking, a veteran should be able to go somewhere in the Victor Valley for housing or something. Now, they have the Vet Center, the Vet Clinic, and they got the VA and so on, but there's no housing for him, and nowhere for really a place to start over if they're homeless. It usually involves alcohol and drugs. Anyway, tragically, Jerry, while he was homeless, went through one of his cycles, was bit by West Nile virus mosquito, and he developed something called Wernicke-Korsakoff Syndrome. Anyway, he's now, he's in a locked unit, he can't leave. He's taken care of, he's okay. But it was sad that he would go through this cycle, and he's a personal friend of mine, been doing this work for a long time. Anyway, I found a house, bought the house, my sister and I bought it, inheritance. In 2012, we opened in 2013, we've been at it for quite a while now. Quick shot, we get about, not less than 30, but up to 50. It's a low volume, veterans a year. Most of them are needing to start over. Doesn't matter their status, about their discharge paperwork, I don't know how much you know about veterans, but if they started, if they were deployed, redeployed, redeployed, and they start drinking, they'll kick them out, they have no benefits. That can usually get reinstated, but takes six months to a year, and we find about 75% of them do get reinstated.
You have 30 seconds.
Anyway, it's a long process, we're here to help the veterans. We're associated with every veteran organization up here that I can think of, and including the Hope Team. And Hope Team's been tremendous. Actually, we're really honored, if you look at the 2015 annual report for the Sheriff's Department, yours truly in that picture. And I think for probably a couple of weeks, we stopped homelessness for veterans only. That's what they claim.
Your time is up.
It was an honor. Pardon me?
Your time is up.
Oh, thank you very much. And I want to thank Ms. Gomez for coming out to see our place. I've got very poor vision, so I can't really see.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Lisa Hayes.
I'm not gonna see you too well. Can you hear me okay? Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Lisa Hayes, I'm with Rolling Start, we are the Center for Independent Living in San Bernardino County. We have been serving individuals in Victorville since 1977. The CBDG grant that we are asking for- The CBDG grant that we are asking for funding for this year is to do a program called Living Well with a Disability. Individuals with disabilities, as you know, have, oftentimes are challenged with access to certain health services, access to transportation. Our Rolling Start does advocacy, peer support, and a lot of really good things to help people, employment, get them back into the community. Living Well with a Disability believes there's a strong connection between health and your ability to achieve your goals. We strongly believe that if we can get some people through this program, which we've done successfully in San Bernardino County, that we're going to see more people with disabilities outworking, more people with disabilities involved in the community, housed, and have a lot more quality of life. What makes Rolling Start unique than many organizations is that we serve, we are an organization with 51% of our employees are people with disabilities themselves. We are a cross-disability organization, serve anywhere from physical disabilities, mental health, cognitive developmental disabilities, and our Board of Directors also is 51% of people with disabilities. We have a slogan called "Nothing About Us Without Us." We believe that our services should be by and for people with disabilities, and we would love the opportunity to be able to do this in Victorville. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those were all the cards that I had. At this time, I close the public hearing.
Didn't I read that this is to be continued? I didn't. I just was thinking it was to be continued to the next meeting.
Not this one here. This is a no-action item.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. There's no need for a motion or a second. So we move on to our next item. Item B2, case number Plan 18-0053, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against an amendment to Title II and Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Section 15061, introduce ordinance numbers 2388 and 2389 for adoption and first reading by title only, and waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance numbers 2388 and 2389.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask the council members if they have any questions of staff, and I will start with Councilmember Jones.
I have none, Madam Mayor, thank you.
I would like to ask a question. In regarding to the municipal code amendment, is it a question of definition in that the city manager is going to be now quoted as being an able-side development individual? In other words, because of the lack of one, we are replacing him by doing, that he will be doing the job rather than someone else? Is it a question of just a new duty for the city manager regarding the change of the code?
I can, I can answer that. Yes, so the code largely, Title 16 largely spoke to a title that no longer exists in our organizational structure. So as to simplify things going forward, and similar to how we do it in a lot of other sections of the code, we've replaced that particular title with city manager or designee. So in this particular case, my designee over the development-related matters would be the deputy city manager.
Is that considered an additional duty for you? Is it already within your definition of city manager?
It's within my role as city manager, and I delegate the authority, and as the authority's been delegated to a newly-created deputy city manager since the organizational changes took place about a year ago, we made sure to incorporate those responsibilities in the deputy city manager's roles.
Thank you.
I have no questions, comments?
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, so the city administration is asking the council to adopt Resolution 19-011, ordinance numbers 2388 and 2389, for the purposes of modifying only subsections of Title II and Chapter 5 of Title 16. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or if I'm missing anything else, any other titles, any other chapters? Because first, I presumed that it was merely the entire Title 16, which affects how probably Mr. Webb commissions or gives information to our planning commissioners and how they would view the entire Title 16. But you're seeing it's only one chapter and one title. It doesn't do the entirety of everything.
Yeah, what's shown to you in the proposed ordinances, it shows a strike through and underline of what the new text would be. So we're not by any means replacing the entire title, it's just making slight modifications within that title.
And I think the city manager kind of answered the question, but I wasn't, it wasn't for me, so I wasn't quite paying much attention. But the reasoning for changing these two titles were for what reasons?
Changes to the titles are titles, code titles, so Title II and Title 16. And so in some cases, it was related to changing and making consistency with who's responsible for effectuating the code, which is what I just spoke to, changing the development director to the city manager and/or its designee. There's also other code-related changes, more so responsive to state law changes where state has actually influenced the building code to make it easier, and development code to make it easier for accessory dwelling units. So those effectively are the larger part of the changes, dealing with addressing that, making sure our code is compatible with that, and then, of course, regulating areas where we still have jurisdiction to regulate.
Okay, and then one other question. I'm assuming that there are training courses that the supervisor and the management, along with staff and the employees, are able to either, whether it's internal and external, is that correct, or am I just presuming that that should take an effect, whether it's yearly, bi-yearly, every five years, in terms of, because you're getting new planning commissioners coming, and I want to make sure that the incoming of these officers understand that they're getting training, it's not just what they hear at the dais and exchanging that information.
Yeah, we did provide training last year. There was two training opportunities. We did unfortunately miss a training opportunity that's happening as we speak, but due to the timing of the new commissioners coming on, we were unable to make that, to reserve it before it sold out. But we do have future training opportunities for them, hopefully within this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think those are all the questions. Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards. Oh, there's one, they're just arrived. A.J. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mayor and Councils. A.J. O'Connell, Victorville, California. I strongly encourage the City Council to adopt these changes into the ordinance into the development code. It will allow for a small remedy for the housing crisis that we have here in Victorville by creating affordable options for families within our city. I do wish to caution the City Council in this particular matter, especially when we're coming to the building code requirements. Let's try not to waive the building code requirements in these particular situations. The building code is developed in order to ensure fire and life safety regardless of zoning, regardless of uses. I just would want to make sure that we keep an eye out for that. But overall, I encourage the Council to adopt this ordinance as swiftly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was the last card. At this time, I close the public hearing. Therefore, I need a motion and a second to introduce and waive reading of ordinance numbers 2388 and 2389.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
At this time, I'll read the ordinance titles. Ordinance number 2388, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville relating to various amendments to Title II and Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code, including but not limited to administration, accessory dwelling units, accessory structures, site plan application, and land use with an environmental exemption. Ordinance number 2389, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville relating to various amendments to Title 16, Chapter 5 of the Victorville Municipal Code, including but not limited to administration, permit expiration, inspections, and timing of development impact fee payment with an environmental exemption.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, and a second by Councilmember Gomez. Is there any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against approving a monitoring program for the Arrowhead Drive and Seventh Avenue Complete Streets Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-011, approving the mitigated negative declaration and monitoring program for the Arrowhead Drive, Seventh Avenue Complete Streets Project.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask council members if they have any questions of staff.
I have several questions when you get to me.
Okay. Ms. Evans?
None for me, thank you, Mayor. No, Mr. Cox.
Who is David Evans and Associates? What do they have to do with this plan?
David Evans and Associates assisted us with the grant application, so they prepared some preliminary plans that we used in the grant application that was for the Active Transportation Program grant.
In the write-up, we talk about a complete street, but we don't have right-of-way for several areas, or I'm assuming we don't have right-of-way. We didn't the last time we checked. Do we have right-of-way for this project?
There are some small slices of right-of-way that we need, but generally, we have all the right-of-way we need for the project, except there are some small slices north of Nusqually Road. But generally, we have all the right-of-way we need for the project.
I had inquired on Arrowhead, I inquired about the right-of-way on the northeast corner of Arrowhead and Nusqually. I mean, yeah, it is Nusqually, because we have three overhead lines all by themselves there. Acquired the right-of-way there, and undergrounding will be a part of the project?
Right-of-way is only needed for one lot. It would only be needed for sidewalk. And we've been coordinating with Edison to establish some kind of an underground program, but we don't have all the information back yet. And so, once we have more information, if it looks feasible, we could proceed with that, but that's gonna require some more analysis on our part.
Going north on Arrowhead, approaching Yates Road, it narrows to two lanes. We have right-of-way there where the house is to be moved and everything?
We do. Actually, there's adequate right-of-way along that stretch going all the way to Yates Road.
Thank you.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, this question is for the city attorney, just making sure that there's no need for recusal, especially if we have property or we have any type of vested interest in the discussion or particular votes. Would that be the case for any of, anyone at the dais?
I don't know. I don't know if anybody has property in close proximity to this Arrowhead Drive. I'm not aware of anybody having property in close proximity to it. If you do, then it would be appropriate to recuse yourself.
My other question, if the city engineer would contextualize it within the street project, how does the negative declaration affect the impact or facilitate SEQA, the requirements, and any future appeals that could come in? I know there's a reporting in the back that says there should be none, but there's always appeals coming forth to City Council, so I beg to differ.
Okay, well, so this initial study in mitigated negative declaration has mitigation measures and monitoring measures. So all the potential impacts from us constructing the project are mitigated to less than a significant level. And so that's what this document documents regarding the, I think you might be referring to a statute of limitations that applies after the document is approved, and I can't remember what that timeframe is. I'm not sure if the city attorney remembers.
Yeah, usually you have 30 days to challenge SEQA findings and determinations.
Okay.
Thank you, no further questions.
Anyone else? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing, and I request a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 19-011.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, items C1 through C5 may be approved with one motion unless a council member requests an item B pool for further discussion.
Yes, I'll be commenting in questions on items C1 through C4.
Does Madam Mayor invite a motion?
I'm sorry, Ms. Jones?
I'm sorry, does the, do you invite a motion at this time?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the council and/or the board, excuse me, the council and the Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on item C5, and the remainder of C1, 2, 3, and 4 will be removed for separate discussion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
If I may, for C1, VMS, if you would please, city manager, the appropriate staff member, brief the City Council and our audience as to relations in reporting the contract. So hear me well, if you don't understand my question, please, I don't mind repeating it. I'm thinking about Palo Alto Hickory Mid-Power Solar Systems and the newest California state laws that talk about our sources of energy and the requirements of cleanliness. So if you can please contextualize the VMS reporting and how it fits in with a lot of these, the three issues that I've already named.
Thank you, Councilmember Gomez and members of the council. Item C1 is your standard quarterly operating results report for the second quarter of fiscal year ending 2019. And very generally speaking, what that report does show is for the months of October, November, and December of 2018, it does summarize your electric sales and your natural gas sales at two locations where we sell those utility services, both at Foxborough and at the airport. At least Foxborough and the airport in the case of electricity, natural gas only at SCLA. Altogether, on the electric side, what it's showing you is year-over-year for that quarter, sales on the electric side are relatively flat. Your peak demand for both electric utilities is about 13.9, almost 14 megawatts for that period of time. Total sales is about 22,000 megawatt hours, and about 4% of your total sales volume came from generating source at the Hoover Dam. Natural gas sales, this is generally your peak time for sales, because they're the colder months. Year-over-year, you saw 7.3% increase just on the nat gas sales out at the airport. I think speaking to the comment, or question I should say, as to Palo Alto, I think the relationship is best summarized, we don't have a relationship with Palo Alto, but I think your comments are more speaking towards what would be characterized as a renewable portfolio standard obligations, whereas a municipal utility, we have a number of obligations to meet threshold requirements. to meet threshold requirements. We're in our electric portfolio. We have to have a certain percentage of renewable energy sources. We're currently working towards that, and in fact, some of the items that you've seen recently, particularly with Hiccati as an example, are transactions where we are actually working towards procuring those renewable energy sources so that we can meet our portfolio standard requirements set forth by the state of California.
Did you also include the solar power that we just adopted last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, you just didn't name it, so I wasn't sure. I wasn't going to guess work, but if you incorporate it, I appreciate it. For the next one, C2, this item asks for City Council to approve a payroll demand schedule for approximately $1.2 million, which includes vendor checks for July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. My two questions are, what percent is the bi-weekly item impacting the city's budget yearly and based on the last five years, and at what rate? So in other words, what I'm looking at is the last five years, how has the payroll been affected, affecting our budget in terms of clearly growing, or because we have had so many years of furlough days and our employees aren't, hourly employees are not working on Fridays? How has that been affecting our budget? I don't know, we don't have a bar graph to look at the increase or the effectiveness of our employees.
And what you're asking right now is something better served, we could specifically come back with. We don't have that information readily available, but we can go into the system and provide some of that data for you, the last five years trend information.
I would appreciate that. That same question is for item C3. The City Council is being asked to approve approximately $3.5 million for a two-week period for the last month's expenses. And so the same thing, what percentage of the bi-weekly amount impacting the city's budget? How has it affected yearly? What rates, what percentages, and how has it increased over our city's budget? So that's the same question. You don't have to answer it, but I would gladly receive information.
I'll just state, that's a little bit more difficult to provide in relation to this item. This is speaking to the commercial demand schedule. And certainly, what you've got here largely is going to be working within your adopted budget. So, a little bit different than the personnel question that you asked.
So, can we presume that because the city's growth in the last five years, clearly we're expending more because the city is growing at a much, whether it's faster, slower pace? So that's what I'm trying to garner.
We can put some trend data together for you to show you what's occurred over the last five years in total spending, if that's okay.
I appreciate if you can provide counsel that. Thank you. For C4 is the quarterly investments. Please, when responding to my inquiries, consider Fitch Smoothies and Standard and Poor's ratings. So that's to contextualize, this is probably for George. What is the city's current rating after the settlement with the federal lawsuit that cost our taxpayers over $19 million? My second one is, have we assessed this area in terms of bond loans, risks, and investment? And that's how I would like the question of this to be responded.
So, Madam Mayor, City Council, too, I just want to draw a connection between the question and the item that's being presented.
Could you pick up just a little place, please?
Want to draw a connection between the questions and the item that's being presented. So what you have on item C4 is the quarterly investment report, which details how the city's cash is invested, not related to the bond portfolio, which is a report of the city's debt. And so, there's really no connection between this investment report, which shows you how our cash is invested, and the actual debt or anything that has to do with the SEC investigation.
So, I'd spend a couple of moments today looking at our transparency with our budget, and I was looking at revenues versus our cash outs for the last two, three years. And I noticed that we significantly, for the last four years, fallen into a minor debt, but then caught up last year and then this year. We have the trending again that's declining. So, when I created this question, is to look at the overall health of the city, and I figured bonds and investments would be the best way to look at the health of the City of Victorville.
We could, we could talk better offline on that, but when you're looking at the city's financial health, what you have seen over the last few years is actually the growing of the fund balance, which is related to this particular item, because you actually see cash being freed up at the year, at year-end for the last couple of years, which was identified in the audit results that were just delivered two meetings ago, I believe. In addition to that, yeah, you do want to look at credit ratings and all those things. Once again, those items are not listed in this particular report. But I can try to answer those questions for you aside, without, because this report's not going to answer those questions, I guess is where I'm going. So, I see, I think I see where you're going with it, and if given an opportunity, I can probably give you different information that will give you a better picture of what the city's financial health is.
Thank you. And that was all. So I move to adopt items, calendar items, C1 through C4.
So I'll second with a caveat that it's action by the council and/or the Board of Directors.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So I have a question. I'm presuming that Councilmember Jones' intent was to modify the actual motion, but if you would, if you wouldn't mind.
It was a caveat, but I can certainly make a substitute motion.
So would you explain your interpretation of what your caveat was, because it wasn't clear to me?
Just with the general understanding that it's the Board of Directors and/or the council taking the action. It's clearly posted on the agenda, I just wanted to say it out loud. It's not necessary to make a substitute motion or amendment on this.
I see. Thank you. That clarity was important to me, to understand what is that you are doing today, in today's action.
You bet.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, council member attendance at 2019 City-City Conference. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council authorize official business travel to the 2019 City-City Conference for all council members in the total amount of $1,959.65 for registration, hotel, and parking.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council members of staff at this time? Anyone have any questions? No?
Yes, I have quite a few. So for D1, there's comments and questions. Does the City of Victorville not have a budget allocated of the limit of $1,200 for council member? I'm sure it is, yes, and this is not a part of it. In regards to policy and attendance at the League of Cities, I know this is not talking about the League of Cities, but this is talking about allocations of funding for council members. What is the purpose of a continual membership of traveling if it's not going to be approved for a council to be able to attend? We're spending $27,000 on a membership plus more. The budget provides for travel-related categories where they are identified amounts, but the policy manual requires for all travels irrespective of approval to come back to the council. And so, it requires the approval of every one of us here, or at least a majority. And wouldn't this also include something like a League of Cities, for instance? So for example, the city pays roughly $27,000 for a membership to California League of Cities in which council members and privileged administration, along with a few others, attend and ask for allocations, but yet they're not allocated. So Councilmember Cox, on many occasions, particularly this year and last year, stated that the City of Victorville did not pay for committees and anything outside of the city business. Yet today, again, it is demonstrated that those statements are unfactual and ignorantly stated to fool the masses. Why should it take a majority to want something but the same majority who does not stop any rights under the same policies? For instance, recall the last two general meetings? I asked to agendize events hosted by the League of Cities, but none was seconded. So it just bothers me that we're double-playing stuff. I'm not saying I don't agree with today, but I do agree with the, disagree with the processes.
I would recommend the council not discuss a lot of those issues because they're not agendized. This is a very limited discussion regarding funding for the 2019 City-City Conference. To the extent there's a further discussion, that would be unfair to the public because those items are not listed or discussed on the agenda item.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do not have any speaker cards at this time. And I move to authorize council to attend the conference with the exception of Councilmember Gomez due to her continued disregard of council policy and procedures. I need a motion and a second.
I make the motion.
I create a, I create a substitute motion to include all council members, because what you would be doing is, you would be bringing discrimination against the city, and this is not fair for our taxpayers. You can't just arbitrarily do stuff like that. You're sitting a president, and I know that the city attorney has been following it greatly, so I would like for you to comment as well.
I don't see any indication of discrimination with respect to the current motion on the table.
So then what you're saying is, okay for the council members, four of them, to exclude me because they feel that they have the power to exclude me, Mr. Attorney?
I haven't seen any vote on the discussion yet. That's premature.
You haven't seen it yet?
I haven't seen it.
But when you-
There has not been any action on the side.
But when and if it takes action, I would like for your legal opinion to be imported. Thank you.
I need a motion. Well, I made the motion and seconded by-
I still need a second on Councilmember Gomez. Is there a second? I second it. Gomez. There was a motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
What is that motion?
This is on a substitute- A substitute motion. That all council members attend. Correct. Okay. And that was moved by Councilmember Gomez and seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez.
I make the motion.
I'm sorry, would you, would the clerk read the motion and the second that's before the council for the vote this instant?
There was a second motion made, that's the one on the floor right now. Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez for all council to attend the City-City Conference. I have not taken vote on the first motion yet.
Do we have discussion on the second?
Is there any further comments?
I have comments.
Okay.
I was trying to follow the League of California Cities that I attended. The city didn't pay for that. I paid for that. In this motion here for Lake Arrowhead, this is a City-City Conference. It's different than the League of California Cities. Certainly, the mayor, the Mayor Protem, needs to attend those. I think our new council needs to attend. I'll make it easy. I don't need to attend. If I do, I'll pay my own way, as I usually do. We don't point that out a lot. But this is, this is an important meeting for those three members of the council, and the only reason that I'm, it's difficult, but within the council meeting, you said you would never represent the city. Those are your words. You will not represent the city. You represent the voters, you will not represent the city. Why would you go to a meeting if you refuse to represent the city? I can't support you to go to a meeting and represent some other point of view, and we have a policy that says that the support, or the position of the city is the mayor and the council, or the whole council. If you agree to do that, I think you should go to the meeting, but as long as your position is you will not represent the city, I don't think you should be there. I think it's a, it shouldn't. So, that's my comment.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Excuse me, can we have a point of clarification here of what is being said? Looking at D1, it states for all council members. So where is the problem? Where's the conflict of interest here, if there is? Can you please clarify it for me?
I believe there was a motion prior to that, that it was instead of having all council members go, it was to have four council members attend. Then there was a substitute motion made to basically consider all council members going, and that is the motion that's before the council right now.
Thank you.
So I have a point of clarification, then. If we have something on the agenda, why are we discussing something totally different that's not on the agenda? And as legal recourse, warrant to being the legal standing point and saying, this agenda item, if it doesn't pass, we can add to the agenda to exclude a council member, bring it into discussion, because as our discussion sits, we are not telling the people what we're discussing right now, because this is all council members. So what we need to do to make matters, I'm not the legal representative here, Mr. DeBernalski, but I do believe that your job has unfortunately failed ever so slightly by not keeping council in order, saying that this is what we're talking about. If we want to add to the agenda and not pass this one, that is the way that we should do about it. And I don't hear you speaking to any of that regard. I don't understand why.
Well, Ms. Gomez, I respectfully disagree with you. Right now, the recommendation before the council is to consider whether or not to fund all members going. Any council member can make a modification to that and submit a motion that differs from that. It's related to the exact same subject matter. Totally appropriate.
Madam Mayor, I have a question, if I may. Thank you so much. So, so that we're all very clear as to this item, could we have just a very brief breakdown as to the importance of this particular conference, in particularly for the newer members and the mayor?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, I've attended this event a couple times representing the city, and it's an opportunity certainly for not only Victorville representatives to go, but also to be among all the other representatives within the counties. So you'll get an opportunity to, of course, network and work with your peers in other communities. But they also have an agenda that is largely educational as to things going on in the county, issues that are of particular interest to the county, and allows you also, in some cases, see best practices from some of your peers as to how they're tackling or handling issues in their community.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
So the substitute motion is for all five, and the motion was made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion fails.
We now go back to the first motion. Is there a second on the first motion?
The motion was made by Mayor Garcia that four attend. Is there a second?
I'm happy to second it.
In that motion, it's clear that the four individuals are the mayor, Mayor Protem, you, Councilmember Jones, and Mr. Cox. I assume you still are going, assuming that motion goes.
If I can represent the city and help, I will go. If I feel it's important that I should be there, I'll pay my own way. I don't think anyone should spend the taxpayers' money if they refuse to represent the city. It's a very simple way to look at it, so.
And then it would probably be appropriate to include in that motion that the funding be adjusted accordingly.
So then the funding should not exceed what is currently here?
That's correct. For clarification, I believe the motion before the council right now is for council members to go and to adjust the funding set forth on the agenda accordingly.
Yes.
Yes. I have the motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes. So for the public that's watching, because I'm also streaming it live myself, I'd like for you to realize that Mr. Cox stated that this was an important meeting for the new ones, meaning the two individuals that were just elected. Or it was important for the mayor and the Mayor Protem to attend. No one else should attend, which is implicit and infers that he and I would not be attending. However, you saw the motion, and it's four, because they say they have the power to oust one, because I don't represent the people in terms of the city. Who is the city? You or us five? Think about that when you talk about things like this that are occurring right now. Who do we represent? Do I represent the community outside these four walls? Or do I- Or do I represent four other council members ideologies? And the same with each individual person that is right here who was elected and is rightfully sitting here. Think about that. Thank you.
I want to respond to that, Madam Mayor. That's just garbage. These council members are elected to represent the city. And that means everyone in the city, whether they agree with us or not, or whether we agree with them, we represent the city. We are, we take an oath to uphold the laws of the city and the state and the federal government. We take the oath. And if we are going to publicly state, we're not going to uphold the oath, we're not going to represent the city, then you're not, you shouldn't be at a meeting where the cities, cities should be there. That's, that's simply my feeling that, why would the taxpayers pay my way to go to a meeting to represent someone against them or against the city? That makes no sense. All you have to do is to swear to the council that you will uphold your oath and you will represent the city and you're on good grounds with me.
Well, then I should just make a motion that all council members pay their way in. We don't need to approve this, right? This is what you've just stated and that's what I understand. That's exactly what you just said.
That is absolutely not what I stated.
So I don't, I'm not going to argue with you because that's not my
Oh, you are arguing with me.
That's not my position.
Yeah, it is.
But you are welcome to have your opinions. But all I want to state is I don't represent you, Mr. Cox,
No.
or any other council member here.
I'm not going to sit here and listen to this garbage when it's not true. Nobody has asked her to represent the city council. They asked to represent the city.
But you are not the city.
No, I'm not.
A hundred and thirty thousand people are.
Hey, point of order.
You're just twisting it and lying and you know it.
No, you twisted it and you know it. Mrs. Mayor, there are two people speaking, not just Mrs. Gomez. So as the chair, garner decorum and professionalism for every single council member.
Number one.
Not just one person. Please provide that in writing, Mrs. Mayor.
Number two.
Please provide that in writing and tell me what
Number three.
I have violated three times.
It'd be appropriate for a point of order right now to call for the question.
Your power was diminished, Mrs. Mayor.
Okay, there
Does somebody call the question?
Well, if we call the question, we need to make sure that no one is still wishing to speak. Otherwise, we'll have to take a formal motion and a vote on that. And that requires a two-thirds vote. To end discussion.
End of discussion. Motion to call the question by Councilmember Jones. Is there a second?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't make the motion, but I will.
Okay.
But I will.
Okay. I'm just going to go to the vote that's on. Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Garcia made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the, all those opposed?
And would you repeat the motion for the record?
The motion is for for the council members to attend the city-county conference.
And that's it, right? That's the only motion?
And, and funding to be adjusted accordingly.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Begging your pardon because procedurally, when you want, when someone can't just say, I call the question and then automatically it ends debate. There's a procedural rule that goes along with doing that. So if someone calls the question, then it's typically what's done is you check to see if there's anybody else still wishing to speak. If there is, then that calling of the question becomes the motion and there needs to be a second and then a vote on the calling of the question. If that passes by a two-thirds vote, then you can go on to the, the actual motion that's on the table.
I totally agree. I didn't, other than me suggesting somebody call the question, I'm not sure anybody called the question. You were willing to make the motion to do that, though, I believe.
I did. And, and then, but then it looks like the vote was actually on the main motion rather than on the calling of the question.
Then we should take a, look for a second on the calling of the question motion
Second.
from Councilmember Jones and take that vote.
For the call to question, motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Abstain.
Now, since there was this back and forth of, of what we're talking about, what is happening now? Can you, can you go back?
There is a motion, there was a motion and a second to call the question, meaning to end debate.
Okay.
And we just took a vote on that and four people have voted in the affirmative. We have not seen your vote yet on that.
Okay.
To end debate. How do you vote?
Well, I have nothing else to say.
But do you vote yes or no?
So would you mind asking that question so I can respond?
What, how do you vote? Yes or no?
So
Do you want to end debate?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a unanimous vote to end debate. Now we go to the motion on the floor, which has been, the motion's been made and seconded.
So are there any further comments?
No.
There can't be. We ended the discussion.
Okay. Sorry. Motion made by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion carries with Mayor Protem Ramirez abstaining and Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Thank you. Now we move on to item D2. Correct?
Correct.
That the city council consider and appoint, and appoint a member to serve as the alternate delegate to the Victorville Economic Development Authority.
I make the motion to nominate myself.
I make a motion to appoint Deborah Jones. I do not have
Second your motion.
I do not have any speaker cards at this time.
So the second motion I had for Councilmember Jones to be the alternate, motion made by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item D3. Discussion regarding a city of Victorville YMCA. Are there any questions from council members of staff at this time? Ms. Ramirez?
I would like to know. I have read that quite a few years ago, the YMCA was considered, however, it was a question of financial support. I personally don't see why the city itself cannot support a YMCA since it builds character in young people. It provides programs. And so therefore, I feel that we need to have a further discussion and a survey as to what is available. I know that through the parks, there are programs that are served. However, the YMCA is a tradition in that it does build and bring forth a community unity with young people who may not necessarily be able to attend parks, but possibly through the YMCA, they will have and receive the needed enhancement, the development of character, the educational programs that will build in them that dignity of being a human being and not being alone. The unity of the community is the fabric of life. If you do not provide life to the young people, you are going to lose your community. My whole point is they need a place to go other than a park. And this is a traditional organization that has provided itself and has proven itself to young people. Thank you very much.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I do have a few questions. So just for the record, when this item was originally requested, I, I opposed it simply because it was for a discussion about YMCA to the exclusion of the YWCA. The YMCA is, is a fabulous organization. I do have some questions and, and Mr. Metzler, you or the city attorney or whoever you call on to answer these would be appreciated. So the, the YMCA is, it stands for Young Men's Christian Association. And so, and its mission is to quote, "Put Christian principles into practice through programs that build healthy spirit, mind, and body for all." It also says that we will also create a welcoming environment for people to feel comfortable to explore spiritual matters and grow in Christian faith if they choose," end quote. And this is on their website. So I'm, I'm a Christian. I'm, I'm absolutely for spreading the good news. But can the city engage in this kind of an activity without violating the establishment clause of the First Amendment?
As to the legal aspect of it, the city attorney and I have chatted about that. I'll actually let the city attorney speak to his research and findings. I will identify, though, for the council that, and Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Ramirez alluded to it, that I was able to find some information that I did share with the council last night and it's information that dates back to about 11 years ago. And I think the important part that I wanted to draw to in what I did share with you all was that as there was a subject discussion about 11 years ago, it was privately promoted. It was something where the city was actually approached as opposed to the city approaching the YMCA. So it was being privately promoted and at that time, funding was being requested largely because it was believed at the time that funding was necessary because the, the project couldn't stand on its own at that time. So with that, I'll yield to the city attorney as to the church versus state aspect of it.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Unfortunately, it's not a clear answer, as is typical in a lot of legal matters. What the test under the court cases has been is whether or not the organization or the association is deemed to be pervasively sectarian. And the CDBG, in fact, itself came down back in 1987 with a memorandum regarding funding of YMCA activities and indicated that typically with respect to ironically, the men's association, they need to look at things like the, the mission statement of the specific YMCA and what kind of activities the funds would be used for. And it's done basically on a case-by-case analysis since all of the associations are somewhat autonomous. There's no sort of national rule on how it's done. So in order to fund a, assuming that was the direction of the council, you would have to look specifically at this YMCA's association, basically the mission statement, what type of programs they were going to do. The CDBG basically has said they don't find them to be persuasively sectarian as such, but again, it's a fact-by-fact analysis based on each individual association.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And my understanding is that these are all typically volunteer-led public charities. So in, in what way could the city manage something like that without involving its own staff?
I, I think if, if the city were to consider wanting to pursue that, it would likely form some type of contractual relationship. I don't necessarily know that we would have it within our ability currently unless we added staff to take that on ourselves. Mind you, we do what we believe are a lot of the similarly-natured services through our community recreation program. I think what was envisioned back then was effectively through contract, we would fund, had the project gone forward, we would fund in the form of a subsidy to, to help support the services. And I would imagine if the council wanted to pursue that relationship again, not sure what the community will bear, but I, I would suspect that if the community can't support it, that type of program on its own, that likely the city would be looked upon for subsidy support.
Okay, then that leads me to my question is, do we know of a specific organization that wants to step up to the plate and begin a YMCA here?
No, not currently.
Okay, and, and then you, you also talked about our parks and rec programming. So do we, it just occurs to me, is there something that we can do in that programming that would meet the needs of a YMCA? Or, because the YMCA is a fabulous program and, and I think a lot of people across the country and maybe in other countries look at it as a place to go after school that, that's, well, I guess, I can't say that's character building and all of that because so many, so many of them are, they're, they're unique to one another. But I, I would think that that would be at the core of it. But is there something that we could do? I, I'm just thinking of, of our budgets.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
I don't know this, I don't know that we have a specific answer to that today largely because we haven't done the side-by-side comparison of what our programs are compared to what they do in other locations. And I believe what they do in other locations may be tailored. But we can certainly do some kind of comparison, I think more so from the perspective to see if there are voids perhaps in our program to where if it provides us with an opportunity to compare to a better model and it allows us to enhance, I think we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I might. The YMCA's, YWCA's, great programs. They, they provide great services. And so does our rec and park, full of services for all ages. If we are not providing a service that's needed for the community, we need to look into that, possibly address it during the budget process. But one of the things that we have to be careful about is starting a service that we're going to subsidize or provide in conjunction with services that are in competition or being provided in our rec and park program. The user fees and the taxpayers, we are paying for this. We have a, we have a very, very good recreation park service, park programs, activities. I take issue with the kids from Adelano that said there's nothing to do here. Someone needs to read this, the rec and park pages, because there's a tremendous amount of things for, for the young people to do. And that's not to say that we're doing, couldn't do a better job. And it's not to saying that because maybe a demand hasn't been made that we haven't addressed, addressed a particular function. And I'm all for having that discussion because the rec and park was for the young people primarily. Of course, the parks are for the adults that want to use it as a family venue. But, but I think more discussion and more opportunity to look into this would certainly be
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Ms. Gomez, did you have something?
So for starters, so Keith, are you going to be sharing more information or was that suggestive and should the council be taking direction?
The only information that I was able to find was the information that I shared with you via email last night. And it was really, it was sent to you not knowing exactly where this conversation was going largely because the council's direction was to at least ask for this item to be agendized for discussion purposes only.
And
So at this point, staff would take any direction you might have as the council.
And why were we discussing CDBGs in terms of YMCA?
Because in the information I believe that was sent last night, I actually talked about CDBG as a possible funding source at that time, 11 years ago, if the council was willing to consider pursuing that program.
And I heard that the city attorney was doing research. Was he directed to do research and did you do research?
I did some research at the request of Mr. Metzler.
Mr. Metzler, were you directed by the city council to do research? I'm just trying to figure out all this.
No, I was not doing research at the direct, direction of the city council. I was actually doing research in preparation of this item. Just trying to anticipate anything that possibly could be asked so that we had answers.
And I appreciate that level that you took. And also, I'd like to pay your, put your attention that Mrs., Mrs. Jones did vote no on the YMCA and it befuddles me how you can vote no and then try to justify it in front of an audience, how you're so for it. But then there's like this, what people call backheaded compliments. And read between the lines, guys. This city council needs to be forthcoming with what it is, our ideologies, instead of backplaying stuff. When we vote no, hopefully our no stays no. It's not whim-wammed like it has been at so many levels. And that really does bother me because we're struggling to get our communities and our children having a YMCA. But then we also have this, well, I like it, but we don't have this, but. But then you look at our, our golf course, 1.2 million, loss of 666,000. And we do have so much money for our golfers. Mr. Cox happens to live there. How much do we have at the community service? What is the budget for parks and recs? How much do we have? Does anyone in staff know? The budget for communities and parks? Because I've heard is the bottom of the barrel.
I don't have the number readily available. I could find it for you and get it to you as soon as possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, may I make a quick comment, please? Thank you so much. So when the motion at our last meeting
at our last meeting, the meeting before the last meeting, was to have a discussion, a preliminary discussion about the introduction of a YMCA into our city. At the time the motion was made and being voted on, it was specifically YMCA. I did make an announcement at that time that the reason that I voted no was because it excluded the YWCA, which is an equally wonderful organization. So I have not backpedaled on anything. When I make a vote, I stand by my vote. There's no need to backpedal. I am a strong supporter of YMCA and the YWCA. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And so I'd also like to respond. Each of us have two minutes, and just be aware of the council. You know, we're just human beings, like each one of you. And it really does bother me how you can look at our vote, but you completely see something so different. And so I'm still looking to see how much of the budget do we have, because former city manager has said that the majority of our taxpayer money goes to our police force because of reducing the crime. And the barrel, the lowest echelons that we provide any money would be to the departments, which we're trying to advocate, which are our kids for YMCA programs. And so it befuddles me again that we can talk about something, but it's just a performance show where we will do nothing, but we will say we care for these entities, these children, these homeless, these, 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 these. But there is absolutely no action. So look at the votes. The votes say for themselves what we care for. You can interpret it. You don't need anybody interpreting the information for you in terms of YMCA, or what is sectarian, or what is not sectarian religious space or not religious space, and how we use federal funding to bring these programs to the fore.
I would like to say something. The skate park funding is $2.3 million. And I have brought it to the attention of the city manager, that I am not happy with that idea, especially because of accidents and money. But I have requested that I see all the parks in order to see the standard that is being kept at these parks. And the reason why is I want to know if the parks that we have that are serving the community are actually up to par. And I mention this only because I have been downtown, and I don't see a park down there. I don't even see a school because it's been closed down. And we had a workshop about lighting, and someone brought up the fact they don't even have sidewalks. So I wonder, I wonder, why can't we not put a priority on people? If there's $2.3 million for a skate park, where's the money for young people? It's just a question that I'm asking. I'm just asking a question.
I don't want to be contradictory, but you need to familiarize yourself with our city so that you will understand exactly and know where all the parks are. If I recall, we have 18 parks within our city, 18 parks, and we have the golf course, and we have one recreational facility. And there is a map. I don't, I can't find it right at the moment, but I know there is a map on our rec pages that gives you that, the information and the locations exactly where all these parks are. The other thing is, I wish everyone would familiarize themselves with our rec pages so they can see what the city does provide for the youth, and for seniors, and for everyone. There's a tremendous amount of recreational activities within our city.
Madam Mayor, if I might, we should get this discussion back to the discussion of the YMCA and not keep talking. I know it's somewhat related, but it's getting a little tangential right now.
Okay, very good. So anyhow, I wish that everyone, now, again, Ms. Gomez has left the dais without permission. So here we go. Okay, we're getting back to our YMCA. And so do I keep her from coming back to the dais, or she didn't even ask permission to leave the dais? She just gets up and walks off?
I just told her the same thing.
Madam Mayor, if there's no more discussion, we had this on the agenda for discussion. We've had a lively discussion. We have a budget coming up. We're going to be talking about the funding of all the activities, including the parks and the park sites, in the budget time. And I would request that we don't have enough information to take an action. We don't have enough information to allocate money, but we will have in a very short time. And can we continue this in conjunction with the Rec and Park budget discussion at the time we do the budget studies? If that's acceptable, I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments?
Just one comment. I do have a card. Deanne Hudgens.
Thank you very much. I just, most of the comments were already brought forth that I had to make by council members. But I just wanted them to be the same comments for me as a citizen in the community. Where does the money come from? Where are the facilities? How much is it going to impact our city revenue by competing with our own park and rec district? We have a very excellent park and rec district, which my family has taken advantage of since about 1970, maybe even before that. I think for Mayor Protem Ramirez to ask for these, I think she needs to be more familiar with what our city is, what our needs are, where our parks are, what we offer our community, before coming in and asking us to provide services that are on top of services that we already are providing or will be competing with, which is something that we can't do as far as, from the revenue, we can't ask somebody to pay for something and then offer the same kind of a service at no cost because we're providing that through our grant. That's not something that's possible for the city to do, in my opinion. My opinion is the taxpayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Madam Mayor, may I make my comment now? Thank you so much. So just as a friendly reminder, at the council, the last regular council meeting, and I believe it was Councilmember Gomez, wanted to include the YWCA into the budget talks. And so I want to make sure that now that we're going to do that with the YMCA looks like, that we don't forget the action that we took the last time for the YWCA as well.
And so I also need clarification, because I remember Cox just made the motion, and I seconded it. But when we add stuff to the agenda, shouldn't we be waiting for the agendized item, or is it appropriate to do it because we don't want to forget? Which I don't mind what we just did. I did second it. I'm just thinking about policies and procedures.
What I believe is happening right now is we have a motion from Councilmember Cox just to continue this discussion item to the time that we take up the budget. What I'm not sure I'm hearing, Councilmember Jones suggests, is that that motion perhaps be modified to include a discussion.
No, no, no. That was done at the last regular council meeting. It was just a friendly reminder.
All right, perfect. So the motion is just to continue this discussion until discussion's at the budget time?
Motion was made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D4. Presentation to award a five-year professional services agreement to White Nielsen Deal Evans LLP for professional auditing services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council and Victorville Water District Board of Directors award a five-year professional services agreement to White Nielsen Deal Evans LLP for professional auditing services, JM 18-069.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff at this time? Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Jones?
No, thank you.
Jim?
Yes. The award is to conduct an audit, which is different than the city audit, which is different than the garbage audit, which is different than the sewer audit. Why? Do we need a different, explain why we need a separate auditing firm for water and anything else is included in the city audit?
So actually, Madam Mayor, City Council, this is the replacement of our previous auditors, our previous city auditors. And so if you recall, during the presentation of the audit a couple of weeks, or a couple of meetings ago, we have kind of termed out the use of our previous auditors. And so we've gone through an RFP process to replace those city auditors. So the very audit that you're talking about, that is the city audit, this is the new auditor that will be conducting said audit.
I would think that that was the case, except when we start the meeting, we are very careful to include Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern Successory Agency, Victorville Redeeming, Joint Powers. But when we talk about the audit, it's the city and water district. So shouldn't it be listing all of those? Isn't that what we're going to do, is have an audit for every entity that the city is controlled over?
Fair statement. So tonight, you would be representing, or serving as the city council, the board of directors for the water district, as well as other entities listed at the beginning of the item, and making that recommendation, or making that action, taking that.
That should have been stated.
And maybe just technically, I think the staff report does cover it. It's, you know, in the small print, in the budget section, where you actually see the coding associated with how we envisioned to pay for this. Certainly, there you have SCLA as an identified funding code. It could be a little bit more embellished in the staff report, but it does identify at least that we're funding it from other agency resources.
I just wanted the clarification, because I, without it, I could see coming back with another audit request for these other ones, because it wasn't included with this one here. So as long as we understand that this is all inclusive, I see no problem.
And it is all inclusive. Any other questions?
Yes. Are the seven acres barren, or is there, maybe, this is D5, right?
D4.
D4? Okay, so let me go to D4. So is there a significant cost reduction from the last year's $174,000 to the year one, to the new contract? I could probably surmise why, but to get an explicit response is probably best. What are the few reasons, if there are those differences, in the cost efficiency? I won't give you my theory behind it. I'll keep asking. Is this service agreement during the city's audit, like Mr. Cox has said, only for the water board? Has a memo been sent out for the discussion of the interview session that was had? I have not heard any of the council members who are part of this bring any notion as to what took place. Has White Nielsen Deal Evans worked with former council members in the past? And please provide the council with a list of questions that were presented and asked to the interviewees in hard copies in email.
I can open the floor to the two council members that participated in the process.
I'm sorry, I missed it. What did you say in the beginning?
The audit subcommittee did consist of Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Jones, and they did participate in the process. So if I may, I can open the floor to them to make comments.
There was a committee. It was selected.
And approved by the council.
So I'm happy to opine further if the mayor would like me to. Thank you. So, and I appreciate the question, Councilmember Gomez, because I was going to actually do that. So this council's audit subcommittee, which was Mayor Garcia and I, did participate with the deputy city manager, Harris, and his team in the interviews of several firms to conduct annual audits of the city. I'm pleased that this firm is the one being brought to the council. In my opinion, while all the applicants were certainly qualified, I found this firm to be the most prepared for the interview and best able to conduct a comprehensive and objective analysis of finance operations and reporting. The interview panel agreed unanimously when we had a chit-chat after all of the interviews. And I'll leave it at that. And I certainly have no interest whatsoever with this particular audit firm. Met them for the first time when we did the interviews.
And it was my first time to meet them also.
Madam Mayor, City Council, to answer the first question, yes, in the final year of service from the prior auditors, they did charge us a total cost of $174,000, what's being proposed by the current firm, or the White Nielsen Deal Evans, is a total cost of $135,000. I can't speak to the difference as to why the previous auditors would have charged this high. I could say that, you know, given all that the city had gone through during the tenure of the previous auditors, there's probably extra, they charged maybe a bit extra to get through the extra scrutiny that they, I believe, they believed they needed to take through our audit. Now that we've cleared a lot of those hurdles, I did give it an opportunity to all three of these particular proposers to go back and adjust their pricing. And this was the result of that pricing, considering the fact that we have overcome quite a few things in just the last couple of years that would give an audit firm pause as to how to appropriate certain amount of time to performing the audit and how they would staff it. And so I think that as a result of overcoming those items, it reflects a reduction in that pricing for our general audit.
And then that begs the question, was there any formal criteria, or was the criteria informal in terms of the structure of the interview? Because it was stated that there was an objective interview. What was that based on? And how could one firm outshine someone else? Do we have an evaluative program that we use, the assessment besides the opinionated expertise that you and your team would have? Anything that substantiates how you think and you come with conclusions as your team?
Correct. So there was an identified list of questions that we did ask all of the, out of the firms, as well as my staff did go through each of the proposals and had particular questions for each one of the firms based on the written response that was provided. And so we spent a good hour, a little bit over an hour with each firm. And I think we got an opportunity to perform appropriate due diligence. If you do have any questions about what the specific findings were, feel free, and we can present.
Yeah, so finally, I would like an overview of that process, just to get familiar generically what actually entailed. I would appreciate that. And like, I've availed myself in multiple emails Mondays at 9:15, which I have not had a response to, but that's how I've availed myself.
Your time is up.
Every, I'm sorry, I had 30 seconds, ma'am. I appreciate that. But if you can bring that forth, I would appreciate it, Mr. City Manager.
I do not have any, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something else?
No, no, thank you.
Did you have anything? No. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, we need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I recommend that, I move that the council approve the recommendation of the staff.
Second.
And is that motion inclusive of all of the different entities?
Inclusive of all the entities, yes, correct.
That's my, yes, that was, I thought that was clarified earlier, but if I need to add that, yes.
Should we name them, or just?
No, that's okay. It's understood.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, may I? So I just wanted to point out that one of the things that I really appreciated about this firm is that they are going to dedicate a particular person with an expertise in cybersecurity to delve into internal controls as it relates to cybersecurity. I find that this is a great asset to our city. It'll serve our community's privacy interests very well.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, standard ground sublease agreement for seven acres of vacant land by and between Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and ExQuadrum Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into the standard ground sublease agreement by and between the SCLA and the ExQuadrum for seven acres of vacant land. for seven acres of vacant land, and authorize a deputy city manager to execute said agreement.
Thank you. Are there any questions from our council members of staff? Uh, Ms. Jones?
None for me, thank you.
Ramirez? Question?
No comments.
Gomez?
Are the seven acres that are bare, are they barren, or is there infrastructure that would be modified at the cost of Ex-
It says vacant land.
-Exquadrum's use? I'm sorry?
Vacant land?
Okay, but vacant land can have structure in it, or pieces, or, or, because I understand, reading the report thoroughly with detailed information, that it would be at the cost of Exquadrum. So if I may reiterate the same question, I, I will. Are the seven acres barren, or is there infrastructure that would be modified at the cost of Exquadrum's use? And how much would that sublease be charging for the land? In other words, how much per, per square feet? And please provide me with a copy of the term lease extension contract that would explain the holdings, the sublease, and other contractual information. Also, an email, um, would be deeming, and that's a request that I'm making publicly, thank you.
Right, we'll start with the size. The size currently is three and a half acres, it's a three and a half acre existing leasehold. With the approval of this lease, and execution of this lease, that will terminate for a full-on seven acres, so it'd be a larger leasehold area. Uh, the per square foot price we're getting is a penny per square foot now, which, uh, sounds a little low, but, uh, quite frankly, that's, that's a high. It's a market high for that type of property. It is, uh, doesn't have any, you've talked about infrastructure, it essentially has no infrastructure. It's a piece of desert, outside, within a fence, and a, a very small, substandard, private driveway, essentially, that leads to it. Uh, of the current three and a half acres, it has some infrastructure and some improvements, I wouldn't call it infrastructure, but some improvements that the Exquadrum Corporation has built there, uh, as part of their past lease, and they exist, at least that's existing right now.
So I'm going to say a penny per square feet. Is it anywhere near, I mean, SCLA is quite big. It's commercial, industrialized, and we do sublease to other, another entity. But I think that's where this one comes in, and, but we're coming in as well. I don't know if it's a second party, or they need our approval, but would you expand on that? Because I know we've had in the past, um, litigation in terms of the square per footage. But I'm assuming that that square footage was where so much other entities are, that the value was raised. But something so far and probably barren, i- it's probably less of a value. I don't recall seeing a map, but I, I can envision the area.
There, there is a map, and you, and you're correct, it, it is definitely, if you look at, uh, right before the, before the standard sublease agreement, it shows that it's pretty, pretty desolate out there. But if I draw your attention to it, you see the, the aircraft parking ramp. Our predecessors many years ago, uh, leased that to a company that currently is parking aircraft here, and even with twenty years of inflators, they are at a one-third, actually less than one-third of a penny. So if one compares what we were left with, what we're doing, the type of deals we're doing now, we can see this considerably better. And there's no cost to the Airport Authority, I understand, there may have been some costs in that project with the aircraft years ago. There's no cost to us here whatsoever. So you're, and, and one needs to remember, an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. That's a lot of, there's a lot of pennies in an acre. So that's how you're getting to three thousand here, uh, so you're getting to, to this value of over three years, one hundred and fifteen thousand, I believe it was. Yeah, one hundred and five thousand.
All right, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? None? I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second. I make a motion, we accept. Um, the agreement by and between SCLA and Exquadrum for the seven acres of vacant land.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D six. A request for, uh, request for approval of the Award of Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement to LSA Associates, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the award of a consultant professional services provider agreement by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport and LSA Associates Incorporated for the land release environmental assessment project number CC nineteen dash zero ninety-nine in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars.
Thank you. Again, any questions by council members of staff? Ms. Ramirez? Ms. Jones?
None for me, thank you.
None.
Is the purpose for the LSA consultant to assess the parcels that are being designed for that, the non-nautical, for the purposes of complying with FAA? That's my understanding of the readings report, thank you. Uh, does the city currently not have the experts within its team to be able to comply with FAA regulations? Is that why we are seeking or outsourcing our, our jobs?
I think the answer to, the simple answer is yes, but I think the more technical answer is that this is a NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, that it's a rather significant document here that is, that we need to comply with. It's not common for airports or cities to have that expertise on staff. It specifically, LSA themselves, we, we have to remember, they have to have a biologist, an air quality expert, a water quality expert. So there's expertises within to deal with the various acts, Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, and so forth. So there, Endangered Species Act, so there's a, a significant amount of expertise that's required for a firm to be able to put something like this together.
Thank you. Um, another thing, how many budget accounts does SCLA? How much, how many, uh, yeah, budget accounts are you responsible for? You just meaning SCLA, not, not your title. And what is SCLA's yearly budget? I know I was told that I can get into the budget, and, um, what I said was, I think if we tell our regular audience, just go look in the budget, they would be a little bit like me. Well, where in the budget, how do you want me to read it? I don't have twenty years' experience, and some of your assistance is greatly appreciated, is what I mentioned. So those are my questions, because I've been asked by my constituency.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, are we getting away from our topic here?
No, we're not.
There is a fiscal impact on a budget, so it is somewhat related to the fiscal impact on the budget item.
The, as, as the attorney says, there is a fiscal impact, that's seventy-five thousand dollars for that. Uh, specific to the budget, I, I feel more prepared to be able to speak to that during a budget formation workshop or one of those meetings. I think, big picture, it's around a six million dollar budget. But certainly, if to break it down any further detail on that, we would be challenged to do so on, on short notice like this.
No, that, that assists, if you just give me a figure of six million, and I really want to just go and look, I will be looking for that six million dollar roughly figure, and then I can make assessment or contact Harris.
I would like to get a better number. Uh, I'd hate to throw numbers around that aren't accurate, so if you can let us follow up and get back with you on that, we certainly will.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate that. And do you know how many budgets are under the belt for SCLA, by any chance, more than ten, under ten?
Budgets or accounts, your original question was accounts.
Well, I said budgets, and I used the word accounts as well. For me, they're synonymous.
Okay.
I know it's funny, Ms. Garcia.
Um, so as to accounts, uh, I would estimate over fifty different accounts, probably three or four different funds.
Okay.
There are three funds, multiple accounts, and it's one comprehensive SCLA budget.
You named accounts because you're talking about the people we serve, or the entities we serve, right? That's-
An, a fund is how, um, the best, the easiest way to explain them would be different pots of money restricted for different uses. Accounts would be anything from a personnel account, a fuel account, a utilities account, various revenue accounts. So they're line items in a budget. So it's one SCLA budget composed of three different funds and several, probably about fifty years-plus, accounts.
Thank you, and you can see why, when the general public comes to me-
You have thirty seconds?
If I have an explanation, and I can at least sound somewhat, and then go and sit with Mrs. Sophie and say, she will explain it further. It really does help, um, with the credibility as well, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, we need a motion in a second.
I move that we approve the award of the Consultant Professional Service Provider Agreement to LSA Associates, Inc.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D seven. Mojave Water Agency Strategic Partnership Grant, twenty eighteen dash twenty nineteen. Award acceptance and landscape maintenance assessment district, uh, number three. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council accept the MWA Strategic Partnership twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen grant funds, approve an additional appropriation in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, as included in the mid-year budget adjustment, authorize project number seven zero six five eight ET water clock installation for landscape maintenance assessment district three, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for program administration.
Thank you. Any questions from council members of staff at this time? Jim, do you have any?
No, I have no questions.
No, thank you. Gomez?
So in three months, roughly, June, I'm going to say that's the mid-year budget review that we're going to have. And so in anticipation of all that, I'm talking about budgets, the budget, the budget account, we asked about line itemization, which impacts, um, this, the questioning that I'm going to provide. So we have the LMAD additional appropriations and requests for partnership, and this is with MWA, which I, I totally get. Uh, what is the actual budget? The same thing for Public Works? I don't know if Water Departments is under the Public Works, I'm going to associate him differently. For the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, what percentage in actual figures did it increase in the budget year? So, uh, if you can't answer that today, just anticipate those potential quen- questions when it comes to the June's mid-review, because those are the questions that are lingering, and so they should prepare staff for, for what I'm going to continue to ask. Uh, and I'm going to do it again here, how many budget, how many budgets? Wh- whether they're budgets or accounts? Um, does Public Works and the Water Department operate in? And to the city attorney, should any person at the dais be recusing themselves of anything, whether they have property, any conflicts of interest and decisions that would directly affect them to today's decisions, based on our discussions with LMAD one and LMAD three? And what is the legal rationale for your opinion?
I don't believe I'm aware of any conflicts, and, uh, based on the criteria to create a conflict, I don't believe any of the council members will get there, especially given that this is grant funding.
Mr. Attorney, I, um, live in the area that's LMAD three, though I don't participate in the vote, and I'm not making the recommendation here. Do I need to step aside?
If you want to err on the side of caution, it wouldn't hurt.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Medsler, that was my beginning inclination, but I didn't want to state anything. I wanted to make sure that when we are transparent, um, we hold our ground, and we are morally righteous in terms of our decisions. So I appreciate the fact that he even did that, because he, like the attorney said, he, if he feels uncomfortable, he may go ahead and do that, although he's not one of the voting members.
Madam Mayor, can I just make one point of clarification, um, based on Councilmember Gomez's comments? The mid-year budget analysis, i- and I just want to make sure that as we go on tonight, that we understand kind of the, the financial cycle and the process. And so the mid-year budget analysis that's taking place covers the first half of the fiscal year, which takes place between July first of two thousand and eighteen and concludes December thirty-first of, uh, of two thousand and eighteen. So we have conducted that analysis, and that will be presented at your next meeting. In June, we will be, you will be presented, and actually through the month of May, you'll be presented with, um, the, the actual figures and the analysis that would prepare you to take action for the budget cycle that begins July one of two thousand and nineteen and concludes June thirty of two thousand and twenty. So just the mid-year analysis covers the first half of the year. It's going to be, it has been done and conducted and completed, and it'll, it'll be presented to you at the, at the second meeting in March. And then what you'll be looking at in June is the next fiscal year's budget. So I just want to make sure that we're not confusing the schedule.
I'll try to keep that straight, but I probably need another reminder for that, thank you.
I have a question for the attorney. Uh, it was recently brought to my attention that I own a house, and I think it's included in the Brentwood area, because there's an assessment on the tax bill, since I just got the tax bill. There's no landscaping in, in the area of the house, the landscaping is away, this house is on the very tip. But are, is there more than one LMAD in Brentwood?
No, there's just one LMAD in Brentwood.
Uh-huh. Well, I'm, I'm paying for it, then I should detract.
That's true.
Once again, I, I appreciate Mr. Cox doing what he did. Um, this, even though sometimes-
You have thirty seconds?
We may not agree on certain things, I, I thoroughly still appreciate the fact that, um, we can have honesty being presented right before your eyes. So, once again, I'm very appreciative of, of asking those types of questions, thank you.
No other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, did you have something?
No, thank you.
No. Thank you so much. Uh, yes, I do have one speaker card. Uh, Jeanette Hayhurst.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jeanette Hayhurst. I am your new Division Six representative for the Mojave Water Agency, and we're just trying to give you seventy-five hundred dollars to be strategic partners with you. Um, so we'd like to keep that in mind, that this is something that's good for your citizens, it's good for your parks. It's, it shows the good partnership that Mojave Water Agency has with the city of Victorville, and we'd certainly like to continue that. Uh, many of you might have known Beverly Lowry. She finally went public with her age. She turned ninety in January, and finally it was time for her to step aside, and she was allowing me, because I stood in the wings until she was ready to retire, and I am your new, uh, for the northern portion of Victorville. So Division Six representative, and again, we look forward to more partnerships with, uh, the city of Victorville and the Mojave Water Agency. Thank you.
Well, thank you so very much. Thank you. That was the only card that I had, so at this time I do need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I move that the city council take action pursuant to the four-fold recommendation posted on the agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Cox absent.
Somebody? Mr. Cox? Now we move on to, uh, public comments. Madam Clerk? We don't need to read the, okay, thank you. Uh, so we move on to, uh, public, um, comments, and I do have, um, some cards. Uh, the first one that I have is Lisette Ramirez, and after Lisette, Deanne Higgins-Hutkins.
Good evening, I'm a student at Cal State Seminarian Dino, and I'm part of the social work program. And me and my team are, we're tasked to provide an advocacy in our community of our choosing, so we decided on downtown Victorville within the surrounding areas of Seventh Street, D Street, Forest Avenue, and First Street. We put out surveys in various businesses throughout downtown Victorville to determine what the need was in the community. After analyzing the data we received, we determined that residents are in need of street maintenance, more policy protection, low-income housing, after-school, and daycare programs. Based on those needs, we created a brochure that we will be distributing to various locations- that we will be distributing to various locations within that community so that residents can have easy access to it. We have included contact information and locations within the brochure so that residents know where the services are provided. We brought some brochure copies for you all to see. My team member is here, and we have the copies if you guys would like to see them. We would appreciate your support in this project. If you could sponsor our brochures by allowing us to email you a copy so that we may, you may disperse these brochures to other services that could be of benefit to this information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deanne Hutkins. And then, after Deanne, El Cotillo. Is he still here?
Good evening again, Council and Mayor. I have a couple of questions that I know won't be answered tonight, but I hopefully at another time. And my question is about some of the activities of council members. Actually, it happened in the month of December after the election. The first one is this picture. And the caption on the picture is, "We thank God for the recognition of the city of Victorville through his mayor Gloria Garcia of giving us the key to the city." The date of this post is December 6th of 2018. Excuse me, and the "us" in this is the Nueva Vision Radio. "I've attempted to obtain information on the key to the city to no avail. I have not found any announcement, proclamation, certificate, or any other action associated with this presentation. Is it within the purview of the mayor, on his or her own, to present the key to organizations or businesses of their choosing? What is the criteria? Where does the key or the plaque come from, and who pays for it?" My next question is, it involves this picture, and there are some others. And it's the mayor and the mayor pro tem at SCLA with a group, some of whom were the same ones that were pictured in the city presentation on December, but this one is on December 14th. With this caption, this caption, the caption was actually in Spanish. I relied on the Facebook translation, which is not perfect. But it says, this Friday in particular, and this caption was written by a person named Alberto Lugo, who I believe lives in the LA area someplace, who is friends with Rafael Porres, the pastor. "This Friday in particular," which was in reference to December 14th, "was a different experience, being able to see the famous Presidential Plane of Mexico. As a very special detail, I was invited by Gloria Garcia and Rita Ramirez, he identified them as mayor and vice mayor, of the kind and progressive city of Victorville, California. All this was possible for the excellent management of Reverend Pastor Rafael Porres, Director General and owner of the new Vision Radio chain. This ship was located at an airport in Victorville, California." And I, and this is book, and I'm thinking it probably said something like, and I looked to make more comments, but I'm not authorized, and we were requested absolute discretion. Then he goes on to say-
You have thirty seconds?
What I can tell you is that he needs to have complete discretion. I have other photos of him in the plane, approaching the plane. And I would like to know, how does that happen? Can anybody get these tours? And how is the permission got, how is the permission granted to enter this equipment that's on the property of SCLA? And I would like to provide this to the clerk, please, so that you would have all of this information. Thank you.
Maggie Martin, and after Maggie, Romero Rodriguez.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. I'm gonna just jump right in, and we're gonna blow through this in nothing flat. When Ms., first of all, it is the responsibility of every council member to put her in check. It's not the city attorney's job to do that. Any one of you can call her back to the dais, any one of you. I would like to suggest in the future, when she has to go have a meet and greet, while she's calling me a racist to those gentlemen out there, that maybe we just take a five-minute coffee break, because, you know. Or call a recess while she does whatever it is she does. First of all, I would like to respond to the hypocrisy of Ms. Gomez, going out there in violation of policy and procedures, and then coming right back to the dais, talking about how she appreciates compliance with the policy and procedures. Can we all say hypocrite? And the rules don't apply to her, but to everybody else? Because that's what I'm thinking, and that's what I'm saying. So, moving on. Ms. Gomez is in the hot seat, like she has no idea. In her stupidity, and I'm gonna omit the language that's in my head. In her stupidity, she CC'd me an email that she sent to everybody, but most importantly to me, to Captain Bessinger, one moment. And there it is, hold on. I wanna read this to you. I mean, she emailed everybody in the city. Okay, and it goes like this. She CC'd to her attorney. By the way, I have an active criminal report against Ms. Gomez and Joan Dehone, her attorney. So, she says to Mr. Dave Wornowski, "Please continue to be aware of the issues. I have included my personal stalker and harasser in this email, so you're all aware of what is going on." She has mocked me, stating, liar, that she is protected by the status quo and favored by the council and is protected and not chastised publicly for her annexes, since City Council has deep pockets where she is rewarded for her actions." Lying.
You have thirty seconds?
She on several occasions has made these statements to me personally, liar. Let me tell you something. You don't have a dime to your name, a pot to piss in and a window to throw it out of, but I'm gonna own everything you ever owned for the rest of your life. If you think I'm stalking, harassing you, get your ass over to that PD-
Maggie?
And file a report. Do it, and do it now.
Maggie? We don't allow that.
Do it now.
Your time is up.
Put it in your mouth. Do it now.
Time is up. Romero Rodriguez?
I have to follow that? Well, anyways, Blanca, thank you for representing us here in the city of Victorville. It takes a lot of courage to do what you're doing. And nothing, democracy didn't come easy. This country was founded democratically with revolution. The slaves got freed with revolution. The civil rights had revolution, had people being blasted with fire hoses in the middle of the street. The women's movement to vote, the suffrage movement, had people, women in jail. So, whether it's a national thing or a local thing, it's important that we know, because we elected you. And my philosophy is, you guys represent us. We voted for you. You represent the voters. And you, as our leaders, are supposed to actually convince us and lead us to your beliefs. Not, you voted me in, I'm gonna do what I want. And so, she doesn't represent the city, but you know, the city is represented by the voters. And so, that's my philosophy. Other people, Mr. Machado thinks differently, well, that's to him's own. But just, I wanna bring something up about the YMCA. I don't know whose idea it is. I think it's Ms. Rita's. But they were putting this in Blanca's face. And what I noticed, it's fine, but it costs money. It costs money, $60 a child a month, $55 a month, $99 a month, $80 a month. It's not free. YMCA charges in Fontana, I think, something like $74 for the whole family. So, the city provides the parks, but the people still have to pay for it. They pay for it, not the city does. They provide the parks, but the services are still paid $55 per month per child. Three children, that's $165. So, it's, maybe they do need some competition, the YMCA, YWCA. They say it's a diocese, it's a Christian group. Hey, we start this meeting with a prayer, and let's not be hypocrites. So, one of the important things now, they said up here that they swore to uphold a code of ethics. So, where was that code when we were being sued by the SEC? And the city had to spend $19.6 million to defend not only the city council, but past city members from, spared from other places, involved with defrauding the investors and embezzlement. So, one question that she asked, where did that money come from? How is that money reported? They answered, it's not there. So, us, as taxpayers, we need to know. And Blanca, you're doing a great job. I know it's hot up there, but you know what? Come November of next year, we will remember you. Thank you very much.
Jeremiah Brzowski. I know I mispronounced it, but. Give me time, give me time.
I'm speaking, City Councilman Jeremiah Brzowski. I just wanted to come over. Our meeting got out, so I just wanted to come over and say hi and talk to you guys a little bit about, so Ms. Maggie Martin that spoke a little bit earlier had kind of wrote me some crazy Facebook messages. I had met Mrs. Gomez one time, and I just wanted to encourage everybody to really work together. I think, I previously worked for the Republican Party, but I think we can all work together. And I wanna encourage all of you guys, and I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Ramirez on her SCAG appointment. So, anytime you guys see me in the community, feel free to reach out. And thank you guys again for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you. Those were all the cards that I had, so now we move on to our city managers' report.
Madam Mayor and the council, a few items coming up. First, community services activity. There's a run-in-the-park scheduled for Saturday, March 16th. That's a 5K and a 3K run-walk event. It's gonna be at Hook Park this time. It's no charge to any member of the public that wants to participate. You can register online at our website. Also, part of our cleanup efforts, we've got a free dump day, neighborhood cleanup day, scheduled on that same day, Saturday, March 16th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's over at the Murph. And we also have a water conservation class coming up. And that's Saturday, March 23rd, 2019, 11:00 to 1:00, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon. That's here in City Hall, Conference Room D. It's a workshop hosted by the city of Victorville in collaboration with the MWA. And that's where attendees will learn water conservation strategies, preparing for the upcoming summer. As far as building activity, I'm pleased to let you know that on the industrial front, we've made some progress. We've issued a temporary C of O for the Rubbermaid expansion out at the airport. That's taken that building to about a million square feet. So, they're effectively in there, starting to do some stacking, some storage, so they can expand their warehouse logistics operations. Also, I've mentioned before, but we're making progress at Palmdale and Elavato. We've actually issued a permit for the tenant improvements on Cardenas Market. That's the old Ralph's right there at Palmdale and Elavato, so that's making progress. And then, on the engineering front, this council awarded a contract for water main replacements in Mountain View Acres back on October 16th. Pleased to report that all 23,000 feet of main, water main have been replaced. It was a $1.4 million contract. We'll be closing it out here with the council shortly. And then, contract that you awarded for the pump station at Amethyst at the January 15th meeting. That's progressing, and we're expecting the start of construction in early April. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Now, we move on to item E three. Items, action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. And I will start with Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I hadn't planned on making any requests this evening, but Councilmember Gomez several times asked questions about conflicts. And we see that we had several people had to step away. So, in light of that, that was actually very productive. And in light of that, I'm wondering if the council might be interested in having an agenda item where we can discuss having an ongoing agenda item where perhaps at the beginning of the meeting, council members can, in one fell swoop, announce any potential conflict. I know that other cities do it. I didn't know if our council is interested in that. And I know that other councils also make an announcement of expertise communications. And if that would be something the council would wanna entertain, I suppose we could discuss that as well.
So, I am completely open. I just thought that with what happened this evening, it was very productive to ask the questions if there were any conflicts. And I'm wondering if we could just have an agenda item where we can talk about putting it on the agenda, have an ongoing item that would deal with an announcement of potential conflict. So, with that said, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Ramirez, do you have anything?
Yes, I would like to bring to discussion El Cinco de Mayo, which of course is the 5th of May, and next month being April. I know that the item needs to be brought at least one month before the actual event takes place. So, I would like to make a motion to bring for discussion El Cinco de Mayo for the next agenda item.
That was previously agendized and approved?
I'm sorry, Charlie.
That was previously agendized and approved. You asked for that two meetings ago.
But because I didn't see it, I thought I better mention it.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and second that. Would you like, we can modify, when would you like to see it? Within 60 days, within 30 days, the next agenda item? If you wanna modify that, I would second that as well.
I just wanna make certain that it becomes an item so that we can discuss it.
Yes, thank you. We had a good meeting downtown in regard to streetlights. It's, I believe we can all agree that we can be at the same meeting, hear the same thing, but have different impressions of what occurred or different understandings. And it's also possible that we all agree on everything we heard. What I heard at that meeting was, it's dark, we want it lighted. It's dark, we want it lighted. There were some other extraneous discussions, recommendations, conversations that came in, but over and over, I heard, it's dark, and we want it lighted. It actually is dark. And I've driven through the area at night. I've driven through the area with other people. It's dark, and they want it lighted. I would like to have just a discussion of the council, because I wanna know if council heard something different than what I heard. I realize that we can redo the downtown plan, and we can spend forever. It's dark, and they want it lighted. And I don't see any reason that we can't move on that. If that's the understanding, if it's not the understanding, the official position of the city is what the three councilmen vote on. And we have to accept that, and we have to represent that if we're going to represent the city. But I believe that we need to discuss this, and it's not on the agenda for discussion. But I don't see, unless I didn't hear this, or I'm out of step with the rest of the council, the request of Root is that it's dark, and they want it lighted. And I would like to put that on the agenda, just for a short council discussion. If we are in agreement, then I'll recommend that we move forward on the agenda and do that this coming year.
Second.
So, I have a question in terms of that. We approved a study, we looked at the types of lights, and we approved $395,000. Is that not indicative of the process? Or what are you saying, that we're not gonna light it up yet? So, we need to talk about the actual lighting, the process, the steps, deadlines?
I'll answer briefly, but that's why I wanted the discussion. We have a policy on where the lights should be. We have the money budgeted. We have a street lighting system. We have a citywide assessment district. If we have a request from someone that the lights are out, or they need a street light, we put it in. But in this area, we're gonna study it, and we're gonna hire consultants, and we're gonna delay. And all they said was, we, this is a dark area, it's unsafe, we want it lighted, and I agree with them 100%. So, that's what I heard, and I'm asking that we just simply put it on the council. It's not agendized. If the council agree, then the next step would be move forward to authorize those lights to be put in ASAP.
The motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Gomez?
So add to the next agenda the discussion and action to have a virtual timer as a cue and a visual for the community. It has been called to my attention that awareness of timing is essential, and it disrupts the appearance of preferential treatment from one speaker to another. So whether we have the timer up here, I don't know what happened to our timer, we used to have it up here, it's no longer there. That's what has been asked, so I'm bringing that to the table to add it as an agenda.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
The second thing is, I'd like to add to the March 19, 2019 agenda, the pre-allocated monies for council to attend the League of California Cities, particularly the upcoming 2019 event, to voice the concerns of our residents into the state Capitol and to participate on continuous professional development and training purposes for all council, for all city council members.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
The third thing that I'd like to add to the agenda for discussion, possible action is, the council should consider agendizing for the month of March this year, on the 19th, the implementation of city goals for the homeless task force, and a review and an update of what has transpired since our last council meeting, since we don't want it to happen like the street lighting, where it just goes nowhere. And I've seen no action, heard nothing, no memos, and I've just been wondering what's happening with the task force. What are we doing, what are our goals, what have we implemented? Nothing that I've heard, and so I would like to see that on the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The fourth thing, as we all are aware, Mr. Cox did serve the City of Victorville in the capacity of city manager, which now, he and Mr. Kennedy gave the position to our current city manager, which is Keith Messler. And you can see Mr. Cox is now at this end of the city politics, in communication with several of our constituents for over the past two elections. The voters have consistently asked if we can consider the limitation of term limits for politician. In compliance with the community, we ask, I'm asking that the council approve, or at least talk about the discussion of the possibility of the City of Victorville being the first in the high desert to implement for our stakeholders' desires, the desire as a term limit for a possible solution.
Second. Because I think council should be restricted to one term, so I'm willing to discuss it.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The fifth thing that I would like to add to the agenda is, the community outcry over these last couple of months have also voiced their concerns of the abuse and seemingly unethical behavior practiced by city administration and city council. To remedy any acts of impropriety, I ask that this council consider to think and discuss what would be needed so we can bring back the government to trust. The people need to trust its government. So by agendizing the repayment of the incurred costs that the chair of this city has so lavishly indulged and privileged over every other elected official that has cost our taxpayers thousands of dollars, I think it's only a remedy to bring back that trust. So I would like to see that agendized.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
And that was all, thank you.
Anyone else? Now we move on.
Do you want to add one thing? Earlier, there was a comment to the extent that if somebody voted to have the discussion, they must be for it. I vote to have the discussion because I want everybody to be a part of it. That doesn't mean I'm particularly for, or against, or anything else, and I don't think that's the intent of anybody else who votes on it, just want to clarify that. So I think we'll have a lively discussion, and I think that state legislature should set the way, and it should start at the top. We have a president that has two term limits, so should congressmen, so should senators, so should the state. It should start at the stop, they should, at the top, and they should set the example. That's the kind of discussion I want. Thank you.
All right, so now we move on to item E4. This is reports from council members, and it's a three-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at the last regular meeting, I made a point to thank our outgoing planning commissioners. First of all, Mr. Lionel DEW does everything wonderfully due, who is unfortunately now in the lobby, and I wanted to personally thank him again for his many years of service. We are blessed to have also here with us this evening Mrs. Dew, who has contributed decades of faithful service to our community and education. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to our community group members who came forward seeking CD BG monies. It was quite wonderful to hear all of the presentations, the strong minds, and the very full hearts that are inclined toward our city and the members of our city. I attended the VVWRA meeting this month. I also attended Sterling Coman Senior Living Event, in which a classic Ford was hoisted over the buildings and into the courtyard for the senior residents to enjoy. It was really exciting to see staff members really excited about bringing something great to the seniors living there. I also participated, as I have now for nine years, in the Read Across America Day. I did that in several schools who were either in Victorville or have Victorville students enrolled. I attended the Victor Valley's Chamber of Commerce's Evening Affair at the mall, and I also met with Jennifer Neri and Richard Mathias of the Root Organization. They shared their goals for the year, as well as their ongoing concerns. And as I'm part Irish, I'd like to extend a happy St. Patty's Day to everyone that's coming up on the 17th, and that's all I have, Mayor Garcia, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez?
That was beautiful, Deborah. I would like to commend all the residents from downtown who came out to the workshop. It was really nice to see so many who were involved and interested in starting, you know, making downtown look the way that it used to be, to restore it. I'd like to commend Mr. Cox for saying that we need to further discuss it, because, you know, they are a part of our community. And I would like to say that I'm newly elected for the SCAGs as a District 65th representative, as of today I found out, which for me, learning is very, very important, and I look forward, even though it's in Los Angeles, I will be traveling once a month only to Los Angeles, so I'm very grateful that I was elected. And last, I would like to acknowledge, I know, this is a part of my life, is, this month is Women's History Month, and I would like to acknowledge one woman especially that I hold dear, and that's Eleanor Roosevelt, mother, wife, first lady, who was the first woman, wife of a president, who said that segregation was wrong, and she took a part. She refused to sit on the Anglo side, she couldn't sit with the African-Americans, so she sat in the middle and took her chair and said, "What's wrong is wrong." And I have to commend all women who are involved in their life, doing their best they can, putting forth their families, their God, and their country. So God bless America, and God bless all American women who are hoping that their American dream will come true. I'm really proud of all, and each and every one of you. Thank you.
Yes. So please observe that if Councilmember Cox seconds anything that Councilmember goes for, you're gonna predict that the majority is gonna follow it. There is absolutely no mistake, just keep watching. Proof and point, you saw it. Five out of five, two items were agendized. Just keep watching, it gets better as the years go by. And this is a question from Councilmember Cox. Did you abstain from voting on Measure I based on SBCT's recent meetings? I know we were going to have a discussion on February 26th, but it didn't happen. Did the city council meet with a special meeting to discuss the accommodation? I didn't, I know I made a motion for the 26th. Mr. Councilmember Cox had seconded it with a unanimous motion, but I don't know what happened, city administration didn't act upon it, I don't know if there's any illegalities, that we weren't following rules or regulations. It just creates a lot of distrust when we motion, and everybody seconds it, and it just doesn't appear, so I hope it just wasn't lost in the midst of nowhere. It just, maybe I missed a memo, maybe I missed the communication, but up here, we had approved it, and it didn't go anywhere. So I'm hoping it's not lost in limbo, and we still adhere to our rules, although that time we didn't. And then to the city attorney, have you researched the right-of-ways and property ownerships as Councilmember Cox had directed you to do so on February 19th, 2019? If so, what policy allows you to proceed with such a request, if it doesn't conflict with the client privilege that the council has set forth in tonight's record? And on the agenda, will staff be bringing the March 19, 2019, the discussion of the right-of-way to ownership? I know these things are pending, I haven't heard anything about them, so I thought I'd bring them to light. Yee, muchisimas gracias a la comunidad que tomó todo su tiempo tan valioso por asistir personalmente al señor Payán y su esposa, y todos los televidentes que miran por la red, y todas las personas que también están mirando por las redes sociales como YouTube. Estamos juntos y seguiremos unidos para traer el cambio que nos incluyan a todos nosotros. Y recuerden que continúe esperándolos para invitarlos el primer y el tercer martes de cada mes, a las seis de la tarde y a las cinco también tenemos juntas. Es muy importante que nosotros sigamos adelante con nuestra cultura, con nuestra lengua, con nuestras ideologías, y no dejemos que nadie nos pare. Tenemos mucho que ofrecer, pero de vez en cuando vemos que la opresión es muy fuerte y seguimos la batalla y seguimos peleando junto. So thank you so much for being here, I appreciate your presence, thank you.
Okay, what I have this evening, as you recall, there was a lawsuit that was brought against me by Mr. Fegati. The results are here. I am not going to take the time to read the entire context of this report, but we have copies available to anyone that would like a copy. I will just read one paragraph. The parties appeared at the December 10, 2018 hearing. However, the court on its own motion continued the December 10 hearing date, because the court was not prepared at that time to hear Mayor Garcia's motion. The court rescheduled the hearing for January 15, 2019. The city attorney's office appeared at the January 15 hearing, and Court Commissioner Susan Slater ruled that Mr. Fegati was trying to use a TRO, Temporary Restraining Order process, to circumvent Mayor Garcia's lawful exercise of public office as mayor of Victorville, and his complaint did not allege any facts that would warrant a restraint order against the mayor. Commissioners Slater dismissed the Fegati complaint with prejudice. It's all here, including that Councilwoman Gomez actually presented the order to me personally, because she was behind this. So anyone that would like a copy of this? Do we have them here? Yes, we have them right here, you can pick them up right here, and it will give you complete information, so it probably will stop this nonsense about that I need to reimburse the city for something that I am not guilty of. Thank you very much. Nothing more before this council meeting is adjourned. Have a safe trip back home.
I'm gonna continue exercising.